Register meeting for January 11, 2021. And as is our custom, we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. We'd all rise for the pledge. I'll lead tonight since Jay is not available. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would ask for adoption of the agenda with the addition of a resolution concerning the events at our nation's capital on January 6, 2021.
No move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. So the first item of business then is a resolution of sympathy recognizing the passing of Gene Oldham. And I would ask for a vote to approve this resolution, a motion to approve the resolution.
Sound moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will now read this resolution into the record. Whereas the town of Pittsboro and our community at large are deeply saddened by the passing of prominent beloved Pittsboro business owner and resident, Mr. Stephen Eugene Gene Oldham, on Friday, December 18, 2020. And whereas Mr. Oldham was born on November 23, 1952, in Durham County, North Carolina. And whereas Mr. Oldham purchased the building at 85 Hillsborough Street here in Pittsboro in June, 1996, and turned it into S and T Soda Shop, now a community staple. And whereas Mr. Oldham's legacy extends far beyond his adored soda shop and his contributions to the vibrancy of Pittsboro are innumerable. And whereas his passing will be solely felt by his family members, his many friends, his customers and the community. Now it therefore be resolved by the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Pittsboro that we hereby express our sincere sympathy to his family, including his wife Vicki, Thomas Oldham, son Steve Oldham and TJ Oldham, both of Pittsboro, two granddaughters and one brother Pierre Pete Oldham of Ashboro. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the town of Pittsboro. Copy of this resolution be presented to his family as a token of our sympathy. I would then ask for a motion to approve the resolution concerning the events of January 6.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will then read this resolution into the record as well. A resolution to invoke unity, whereas the town of Pittsboro Board of Conditioner Commissioners condemns the incitement of the violence violent assault on the United States Capitol on January 6, 2021. And whereas the town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners is appalled and saddened by the recent violent assault on the United States Capitol. And whereas the town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners offers condolences to the families of those protecting the United States Capitol who have suffered injury or death. And whereas the town of Pittsboro Commissioners salutes the bravery of the officials who protected the United States Capitol and the United States Senators and Representatives assembled therein. Now therefore it be resolved that the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Pittsboro condemn the violent assault on the Capitol of the United States and those organizing and facilitating the assault. And be it further resolved that the mayor and board of commissioners applaud the calls for national unity and resolve in the light of this marred event. All right. So the next item on the agenda then is manager updates, Chris.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did we vote on that resolution?
Oh, I think we did, did we? If not, we did. Yeah, I thought so. Okay. So will that be manager updates, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief tonight. We've got a number of items on the agenda. And there might be a couple of those out there who want to watch a football game. You're lucky that Auburn isn't playing. Otherwise, we had like one item on the agenda. We'd have been out about 7:15. So I'm not sure if you're lucky or misfortunate that Auburn didn't make it the national championship, but but nonetheless, I'll be brief tonight. I have one update and just wanted to really extend a thank you of service to what is probably now more publicly known or outgoing planning director, Mr. Jeff Jones. Jeff has been with the town for five years now and has, as the change of the new year, decided to go in a new direction with his career. And as many of you know, planning staff and planning directors in particular spend a great deal of their life at meetings such as this, planning boards, historic districts, town council, town board of commissioners, you know, county commissioners, all those types of things. You spend a lifetime seemingly at those types of meetings. And it's a job that always doesn't get the appropriate pats on the back when you do things well and is oftentimes open to hyper criticism when things don't go so well. So just from on behalf of my office, me personally and the town at large, just want to thank Jeff for his five years of service to the town as our planning director. And we wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors as he looks to go in a different direction with his career. So that's all I have for tonight. Just want to give Mr. Jones a good thank you and a deserved pat on the back for the good things that he's done.
Thank you, Chris.
Agreed. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next be mayor updates concerns. I don't have any updates, just one concern to mention. As I've been receiving some calls from citizens concerning the row of traffic lights from the beginning of the mosaic project up through the entrance into Powell Place and into the Lowe's Shopping Center. And the plate is that there appears to be zero timing incorporated into any of these lights. So that traffic coming into Pittsboro from the north may well find themselves stopping at four or five lights that are less than 100 yards apart from each other. And they have asked whether there is something that we could get together with NCDOT and see if there's some solution to that or what their thought process is in putting those lights together in such a way that it tends to back up traffic. So that was the concern I'm passing on. And so that is mine. Commissioner updates, Mr. Farrell is not here, is an excused absence due to health issues with his wife. And so Kyle, go to you.
Sure. Yeah, the Boys and Girls Club, we've been able recently, over the last week, to distribute some desks that were built and through, we were connected to some people through the Kiwanis Club. And then also delivered about 20 desks to the Siler City Boys and Girls Club. So child sized desk that people can use it at home. And then also really big news for the Boys and Girls Club is the Kiwanis Club has officially voted to partner with the Pittsboro Boys and Girls Club and so, and to host them at their location. So we officially have a location for the Pittsboro Boys and Girls Club now. And then a lot of other things can fall into place rapidly. And I'll be talking about that more with you all before next meeting, for next meeting as well. But a really, really big positive step there in that we formally have a location. So.
That's great. Thank you, Cole.
Well done, Kyle.
Excellent. Commissioner Fioco?
Well, some of this is probably already been published news, but the EDC has hired a new president. They were without for, gosh, I think about six months. And his name is Michael Smith. He's got 20 years of experience and coming from Sanford where he's been the last two years. And Sanford's got a lot going on for them. So I think he's a good hire. Happy that the circle project has started today. That is a project that was defined in the downtown vision plan, which started in 2014. So we've been at this for quite a while. It's great to have that started. I shared that news today with Representative Reeves. He's been integral part of fruition. And he was happy to hear that we're on our way. And of course, looking forward to the town hall project, which is another item from our downtown vision plan. So look forward to all the good news coming from Chris Kennedy on that front. Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting is this Wednesday evening. I'll be at Pittsboro Business Association this Wednesday mornings and will be sharing news about the traffic circle project with the PBA. And the TarPO, next meeting is February 11. And again, I want to just express my gratitude and congratulate staff for being quick on their feet and going after the C Mac grant application. So appreciate that. That's a great opportunity that we took advantage of.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin?
No, I don't have any updates at this time. Triangle J will meet later on in the month. And the Chatham County Affordable Housing Task Force, our meeting was postponed. It was supposedly the seventh, but it was postponed. So I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nas. Also, thanks especially for mentioning the traffic light coordination concern. I've heard similar concerns. And so I want to echo that, but I also would like to ask specifically if we might contemplate or what's involved with revisiting the speed limits along that stretch because in a very short space, it goes from 55 to 45 and back up to 55 and then back down to 45. And then I think it goes to 35 to 25.
Right.
And so it's just an open question, Mr. Kennedy, if you have any insights now or if you can share with us more later after you've spoken NCDOT about the stoplight timing concerns or lack of coordination, I'm all ears.
Yeah, the the traffic light coordination, that's obviously a DOT conversation to have within to see if we can have a better sequencing. You know, we all like to think that when a new light goes in that they get quote unquote recalibrated, but I can definitely see how that might get lost in the shuffle amongst trying to get a traffic light installed as well of of trying to get it up and timed and understanding. And certainly after after testing it, you see how it works and how it doesn't work. From a speed limit perspective, now that we've had some recent annexations of that area going all the way up through Northwood and Mosaic. Since all that, all that roadway is now incorporated into the town limits, the Board of Commissioners now has, I'll say a greater level of authority in dictating what that speed is. I would highly doubt considering that's not a, you know, it is a DOT road, but it's not an interstate type road, at least for that stretch, regardless of any numeration of the road. I think we probably have pretty good authority to try to at least temper that speed or get it into a more logical pattern. So I'll add that to the conversation list with DOT and see if if they have any heartburn about that. If not, a simple resolution from the board changing the speed limit and will have, you know, certainly the termina for those sections where it might be 25, 35, 45, 55, or any variation in between. And that way we hopefully can make it a more logical transition of speed and not a presumed speed trap of sorts.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Final note from my updates is regarding the Climate Change Advisory Committee, which is under new leadership. There's a co-chairmanship now and they will have their next meeting on the 28th of January. And Gary Simpson from here in Pittsboro continues to be our liaison to that committee. On a related note, but not through the Climate Change Advisory Committee, it's been brought to my attention that there's a new resolution. And I will present this to the board circulated in advance of our next meeting for the 25th. I'd like to ask for support for consideration. If not on the 25th, then at a future meeting. This will be a resolution in support of passage of a piece of federal legislation to address climate change. And it is, it builds on the support, builds on the resolution that this board passed in 2017 in support of a concept called fee and dividend policy that would essentially be a net benefit for most all citizens of Pittsboro, because I don't think we have any oil or gas executives living in town. And that would be felt be felt mainly in the form of monthly dividends to offset the increase in cost from fees on fossil fuels. And hello, Aaron Caro, if you could please. Thank you.
Thanks.
And so for most citizens, this would be a significantly greater dividend than the cost would be on the impact of their daily expenses. So I hope to start a robust conversation on the subject. As I said, and I'll circulate draft of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have any citizens that signed up to speak, Cassie?
No, we do not.
All right. Well, then I would ask for a motion to either approve or to approve with amendments, the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with two modifications. One, a minor edit that I made to the OU if that is team day Scrivener's error. If not, I'll be fine with it language as is, but I think the edit only clarifies the intent. And I would like to poll nine and 10 and put those back on the agenda when we have all of the documents associated with that public hearing for us to review as well as the public.
Commissioner Fioco, given that number 10 is also, I'll say tied to number nine, would you like to pull both those?
Yeah, I don't know if I blanked out, but I did say nine and 10.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you, Chris.
I may have blanked out.
Well, I have unstable internet, so.
Commissioner Fioco, I'm sorry, what was your comment on Scrivener's error?
I shot out an email earlier where I deleted or I suggested we strike some, I think redundant words describing the intent of the property to be a mixed use. And it says mixed use of a mixed use commercial and residential, which I think saying a mixed use commercial and residential is fine, not having to repeat it twice. So I think it reads better.
Mixed, yeah, mixed use or mix of uses.
It was the language. Yeah, I noted the same. Okay, so that's what I'm talking about. I thought that it was acceptable. I think if we have to live with it, that's fine. I think if we can strike it, it will be, it will read better.
And for that, for that individual phrase, the reason that it was specified differently is because mixed use and mixture uses are two different things. And that's why there was a, the addition of language to separate mixture of uses within a structure and mixture of uses that are happen to be on the same property.
So you believe that that's intentional language to distinguish those two?
I would say so.
Okay, then I'll accept it.
Okay.
All right. So with that, we now have a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
And Mayor, just for clarification, that is the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of items nine and 10.
Right, with the exception of items nine and 10. So I have a motion to accept the agenda with the exception of the items nine and 10?
Sound moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, very good. Thank you. No, I'll be curious. So the next item of business is new business site plan review with the dialysis center. Soon planning will be bringing that up.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to request the board recuse me from this item as the design firm, civil consultants, I'm a principal in that firm.
All right.
Yes, Mayor Nas, that'll be me, Kaylee Mullins presenting for planning.
Does the board, does the board need to take a vote for on recusal? Or just accept the statement?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be proper if we have a motion, a second and a vote to accept Mr. Fioco's recusal.
I agree. Do I hear such a motion?
Sound moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right. All right. Teresa, you're doing this one? Or no, Kayla, you're doing this one?
Yes, sir. Let me pull up the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I can.
Okay, so this proposal is being presented to the board as a site plan for review and decision. Additionally, the applicant has applied for a minor subdivision to subdivide 1.3 acres of parcel 85284 for the dialysis center. The proposal is to construct a 10,000 square foot dialysis center in the Powell Place MUPD. Also shown is a possible future expansion. The applicant understands that the town would not be approving any future work at this time. And you can see the kind of footprint for it right here in its label. This use requires 32 parking spaces. The applicant would be providing 62 in anticipation of a future expansion. This structure would connect to town utilities. Please refer to the sewer allocation agreement in sewer request of 8,600 gallons per day. The sewer request derives from the paid and allocated sewer for Powell Place. The plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's relevant development ordinances by the appropriate departments. Staff recommends approval of the proposed request, subject to issuance of any additional local and state permits. This was prepared for the planning board on December 7, 2020. The plan was found to be satisfactory in a vote of six to zero, with the planning board recommending approval of the site plan. The action required is to make a motion on the site plan. And please note that the applicant and engineer here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
A question on the, on the parking with, with so much extra parking now, if they go to develop that in the future, does that total count towards future development or is that tied to this?
Yes, so they would, they need 32. So then the remaining parking space would would count towards their future development for expansion.
Okay. And then I don't know if we're going to vote on them together, but for the sewer allocation, do we have the latest data on the dwindling numbers?
Um, we do. I put the current one in the, in the next report, so I do have that number. And as of 12/23/2020, we should have approximately 17,128 gallons per day left.
But this would come from that allocation already granted to Powell Place, correct? Is that what we call paper flow?
Correct. Commissioner, that the, the 200,000 that was originally purchased for Powell Place, this comes from that kitty, so to speak. So.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to.
Yeah. If you have noticed how the agenda's transitioned since it first went out last Monday, we removed that from this individual site plan just to, to not confuse anyone. There's no need for the board to act on any type of sewer allocation for this project. They have sewer available. There's a private agreement in place between this developer and the Powell Place developers that I'll say we need not be privy to, except for the fact that we know that there's sewer available. And then, but so the board's decision tonight is simply just to review the site plan and, and to render a decision on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for that clarification, because that was the exact question I was going to ask regarding this, the sewer allocation. And I did think it was from before when Powell Place had obtained all of that sewer allocation.
Yeah, very similar in concept to, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, Northwood and Mosaic did a similar concept for the gas station where they had, they had an allocation already and they re-appropriate it within their own internal system and to the town. Doesn't make much of a difference as long, as long as we know what the tallies are going to be, but very similar accommodation there.
This is a.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have another question.
Okay.
Not quite sure how to couch this question, but I did notice that the the application included an example customer record or bill for illustration of, of water demand and sewer demand from Lewisburg. And it, it it brought to mind the the memory that this, this is for the dialysis center that's currently at the mill. Is that right? They're relocating?
That is correct.
And I believe that they are using reverse osmosis already at that location. And we've all been briefed on the fact that reverse osmosis has significant concentrate effluent associated with it that would simply be poured into the sewer. And I wonder if they, their calculations considered that or whether or not they're, I mean, are they, do we know if they're doing reverse osmosis in Lewisburg?
This is Aaron. I work with Precinius Kidney Care. Yes, we use ROs reverse osmosis at all of our clinics almost exclusively. And Lewisburg, as an example, is an older clinic. We have more modern, more up to date equipment that we'll be putting in here. The RO that is, is being installed in this location is going to be 75% efficient. So you know, the numbers that you see do reflect an older technology. So we would anticipate probably a little bit of savings given our, our 75% equipment.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, anything else?
I think Kyle has, you have a question.
Kyle? I was going to make a motion.
That's what I was going to do. That's what I was going to do.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four is it, all right. Thank you, Kyle. Is there anything else on this one, Kylie? No, okay. All right, next item on the agenda then is the SOCO development.
I will be presenting again for that, Mayor Ness.
Okay, thank you.
So this proposal is being presented to the board as a site plan for review and decision. Their proposal is to modify the existing building at 56 Sanford Road to create a 4,000 square foot restaurant with two stories. Parking is not required in the C4 zoning district, but the applicant has provided four spaces. This structure would connect to town utilities. Please refer to the sewer request of 7,178 gallons per day. This request includes the sewer needed for 56 Sanford, but also through the entire SOCO development. Calculations suggest that as of 12/23/2020, the town has approximately 17,128 gallons per day of sewer remaining. It has also been suggested in the past that the town should save approximately 2,000 gallons per day for the new town hall. The plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's relevant development ordinances by the appropriate departments. Staff recommends approval of the proposed request subject to issuance of any additional local and state permits. Prepared for the planning board on December 7th, 2020, the plan was found to be satisfactory in a vote of six to zero with the planning board recommending approval of the site plan. The action required is to make a motion on the site plan. And please note the applicant and engineer are here to answer any questions.
Okay. Right, any comments or questions?
So I guess just to be clear, this, this is the site plan specifically for that lot, but the sewer allocation encompasses all of the changes. And I, and I see that detail there, but
Yes.
The other renovations, I guess, don't require site plan?
And I think it's 10 Sanford Road in 2022, all, all of these in these area 46. And I know we just issued them a demo permit to do some demolition, but I'm not sure if they will have to come in for a site plan or not.
Oh, this is Jeff, no, they won't make a site plan because the, the work they're doing is more facade work and plaza work. It's not building, they're not building a building or adding an addition. Kaylee's right, we did issue a demo permit for 56 Sanford and for the small insurance building, the brown building right there in the circle. So they'll have that, they will come back for a zoning compliance permit just for that plaza work and, and facade work. But they need, they, they need the sewer for that, for us to be able to issue the zoning compliance on, on that work that they'll eventually do on the other buildings.
Okay.
And Commissioner Shipp, to, to go along with what Kaylee and Jeff both said, a- as you're accustomed to with our sewer allocation policy, you can't have a site plan approved unless there's a sewer allocation that corresponds with that approval. And so, since they were already submitting a sewer allocation request with this structure, we talked with Mr. Stafford and, and felt, you know, let's just go ahead and ask for everything that you need in one fell swoop, even though rather than having to come back for something that only is only compliance letter, just go ahead and take care of the entire SOCO project, because this one had to have, 56 Sanford Road needed one. So we just kind of syn- synthesized, if I can speak, that, all that into one letter.
Yeah, and, and I think it makes sense to kind of reconcile the, the ups and downs of those various activities, you know, demolition and things like that, so.
Okay. Any, anything else on this one?
May I interject for a moment?
Certainly.
Greg Stafford.
Greg.
One of the things that we wanted to make sure of is taking a look at the sewer allocation rules. It says that the sewer allocation is more than one year from the date that it's granted unless otherwise specified by the town. That essentially is the construction time for the, for this project. And we're putting in the new building at 56, and we're also keeping all of the old roadhouse open. And I'd like to ask the board, because they have the power to do it, if they can make it one year from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Because let's just say during this time of COVID, finding tenants ain't a walk in the park. So we're just worried about spending as much money as we're spending here, being unable to fill the spots immediately, and then losing our sewer allocation, being unable to do it because there's none left.
So what are you, what are you suggesting for?
I'm asking that the sewer allocation, it said, in the rules, it says the town board can grant the allocation otherwise. And my otherwise would, instead of being a year from the date that it's granted, being a year from the date the certificate of occupancy is granted. And that allows me the time to make sure I get this thing rented without loo- losing sewer allocation at the roadhouse or at 56 Sanford.
So Greg, you're asking that instead of the allocation being valid for a year after issuance of site plan approval, that it'd be valid for a year after certificate of occupancy is issued for the site plan?
Yes, for the site plan and for the roadhouse as well. Because otherwise, we waste the year in construction. And people are extremely hesitant right now to sign a lease. And our fear is that we lose the allocation in a town that's essentially out of allocation. And then I can't get it back for a number of years, and that would be a personal disaster, so, you know, I need some sort of assurance I'd be able to carry it out past the day that the buildings are built.
And, and for utmost clarity, for those listening in, as well as the commissioners, what Mr. Stafford's referring to, under our sewer allocation guidelines adopted in October 2019, under subsection one, which is general requirements, subsection E says that all sewer allocation approvals will, will be for not more than one year unless otherwise specified by the town. As long as the project remains active, the corresponding sewer allocation will also remain active. I, I think to hedge a little bit, or perhaps interpret Mr. Stafford's comments, and he and I have, have spoken several times pertaining to this, that I, I think just providing that utmost clarity for what one year is and what triggers we're looking at there. Again, in a, in a kind of a volatile business environment that COVID-19 has presented. And the fact that there, there is some leniency, if you will, in, in the, in the sewer allocation guidelines that one year, again, is, is one year as long as the project remains active from that point. But also, we can provide some clarity with the, unless otherwise specified by the town. So if the Board of Commissioners wishes to provide some specificity for Mr. Stafford, then we can certainly do so tonight.
I do recall in prior circumstances, Mr. Jones explaining that, emphasizing that point, as long as the project is still active, that, that he has, at his discretion, extended for a year, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, John, as long as the project is under construction, active work is going on, that's been staff's position in the past, that you're in good faith working towards getting your building, your business, your site plan complete. You don't lose your allocation on the 12th, you know, 365 days from tonight. That's just not how we've practiced.
So it's 365 from the end of construction?
Well, Greg, you're going to essentially pay for your allocation once you get a zoning compliance for 56 Sanford Road. So you're going to pay system development fees for that sewer. And I would, I would dare say that you have completed the, the work to, to keep that sewer. Once you pay your system development fees and you're under construction, I won't be here, but I can't imagine that the town would take your paper allocation away from you. We want you to succeed and to operate and open. But I can't speak for the future, but once you pay for the, for your system development fees, I can't see the town taking it back from you.
Can I interject a little bit? The, the year would be from the time of the zoning compliance or the payment of the system development fees. But once he has a CO, once he's completed construction, it doesn't make any difference whether the building is vacant or not. I mean, his allocation still is good if he gets a CO within a year. So I don't understand why there is a problem.
Okay, and we've, we've not, in my memory, pulled back such an allocation.
Well, you use it or lose it, but at the same time, if he gets a CO within a year, he shouldn't have any issue whether he has a tenant or doesn't have a tenant.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, I think you're concerned about pulling a building permit for, let's say, you know, the former roadhouse, and in order to occupy that, you will need a certificate of occupancy for that building permit.
No, certificate of zoning compliance, not, you can't get a CO till you're finished construction.
I, right, so he's going, I'm not talking about this project, I'm talking about the roadhouse, pulling a building permit to make the renovations associated with that property and asking for preservation of the allocation that encompasses the entire campus associated with that certificate of occupancy is the way I understand what Greg is asking.
And, and, and let me just say, I am not understanding completely. When I was looking at the rules, they seem a little bit vague exactly how long that year is when the clock starts ticking. But the ultimate issue for me is tonight, we're being granted, I mean, the board votes that way, a sewer allocation. And the rule says one year after it's allocated. I need more than that because we're going to spend 11 months of it in building. And it, it's an untenable proposition to look at one month to occupy the building. Now, if there's another interpretation where I'm going to have six, eight, 10, 12 months to fill these other spots, then we have no problem, and it's my misunderstanding.
Mr. Messick, I, I, I would agree with you on the, on the certificate of occupancy would, because again, our, our policy, at least for that, that subsection E specifies that as long as the project's active, the allocation also remains active.
Right, absolutely.
The, the, I would say the best trigger for the town, again, it's, it's currently under the umbrella of the county, but the best trigger that would be, I would say, more tangible than not, and I presume where the one year came from is that a building permit in North Carolina is valid for, for generally 12 months.
Right, but as long as you're making progress, it's, it's extended.
Correct, so i- if, if, again, if we want to specify otherwise to provide the utmost clarity for this project, both for our own sake and Mr. Stafford's, perhaps, and again, not knowing the environment of, of building and securing tenants and all that stuff, that just shy of a CO would be the building permit. And perhaps if the one year is basically, if you, if you get building permits and you're building along, everything's all hunky-dory. And you get a CO, then this is all moot. But if you get a building permit and your building permit lapses, perhaps we take one year from the lapse of your building permit, and you're good for that period, and if Mr. Stafford lets it go one year after he lapses his building permit, then we have a conversation about whether it's pulled back or not.
Why would you want to do that?
I don't want to.
If the building permit lapses, that means there's, that he's making no progress. Why would you want to leave the allocation in limbo if he's not making any progress? It's ea- it's easy enough to keep the building permit active. And so there, there shouldn't really be a problem, either he gets a CO or he doesn't.
But that, I agree with you.
I'm hearing a suggestion for leniency from Mr. Kennedy.
Well, yeah, yes, Mr. Stafford is, is, and I think rightfully so, I mean, he's got a lot of money tied to this, he's got a lot of money tied into our, our improvements that we talked about earlier for the traffic circle. I- if, if we want to provide the utmost clarity for ourselves and Mr. Stafford, and we want to try to work with Mr. Stafford on this, and, and helping him unders- best understand and help us, again, help us best understand it, that we think one year from now, we're going to have no issue, because we're going to go through all the appropriate planning stuff, we're going to go through all the permitting, and this project's going to be active, and we don't have to worry about this. If he proceeds directly past boardwalk and, and to a CO, then we're all good. But if for whatever reason there's a lapse, then perhaps that's when the one year can be assigned, and he would have basically 12 months to renew the permit, otherwise, it's still active anyway. Again, it probably addresses an issue that will never come to fruition, we hope not, but I think that provides a little bit of clarity.
Well, and, and I think the only reason we're talking about this is because we're so short on sewer. If we had 500,000 gallons of sewer left, it's not a concern, because it could go back in and come back out. But it's probably the most valuable thing we have in town right now, outside of the money that you spend on a building, is actually having sewer for that. So, so I, I understand that perspective, that, you know, this is, and, and this will probably come up for the remaining, however many hundreds of gallons we have left of sewer for those allocations as well. So I think it's, I think it's something we should think about and, and do, and, and probably plan on doing that for the remaining allocations.
Yeah, a- and I won't speak for Mr. Stafford, but if we had half a million gallons left of sewer, he wouldn't have asked the question.
No, and if we weren't in the middle of COVID, I wouldn't be worried about renting restaurant space. And so I'm just, you know, we're moving forward with a giant project in good faith, that the sewer allocation will be there, but at some level, I just need an assurance from the board that I'm going to have, you know, to rent those spaces after November when this project is finished being built.
So a clarifying question, if I may, just to be explicit, the 56 Sanford Road is a discreet site plan proposal. And the sewer allocation is for both that and the roadhouse or for all of these properties at SOCO?
It is the total of all of them. In fact, we had enough allocation left over on the rest of the buildings from their existence before that we don't really need it. This is primarily just 56, but I'm trying, and when I'm talking about preserving it, I'm talking about preserving the roadhouse and 56, because those are the two that will be under construction and unoccupied.
But, but roadhouse is not going to go away, it's not going to evaporate. Is it?
The information I've had in previous discussions was if it's unoccupied for six months, I lose the allocation. And if that's wrong, that's wrong.
I, I don't think that's in the policy, but I haven't looked lately.
The policy is silent on that.
Okay, so am I correct then that I can assume that I've got a year after the project ceases, meaning it'll stop when we finish construction at the beginning of November?
The way I understand what Mr. Messick is saying is once you've got a certificate of occupancy.
The way I understand what Mr. Messick is saying is once you've got a certificate of occupancy, that flow is converted from a permitted piece of paper for you. And it will just show up as tributary at our plant and it is yours forever and ever.
Okay, and.
On that property.
Right, and fifty six won't lose there, I mean, and thirty nine West, the roadhouse won't lose theirs.
That is what, that, and that is what Paul is saying.
Okay.
That's already tributary.
Right. And, and that would fall under, again, uh, for those kind of following the policy, subsection two is existing structures or property. So all the, everything that you had existing would fall into that existing structures or property. We will, what Mr. Messick referred to earlier, once fifty six Sanford Road obtains its CO, it converts from new development to an existing structure or property. Um, and therefore its allocation is preserved there as well. The, the si- the six months, um, provision, there's only two dates within the, the policy, the one year that you've already referenced, Mr. Stafford. And then the six months is under new projects and it refers to the out of cycle projects where you haven't. You've basically obtained an allocation, you're going through, um, the plan, but you fall out of cycle for more than six months. Um, so if you fall out of cycle for your pending request, a new request will be required.
Good.
Well, and one of the, the thoughts, I think, where the six months, um, came from as kind of a guideline. Was the idea that if you had a vacant property. Then that data, that flow was not showing up at the plant as tributary. And therefore, um, you could miscalculate. Based on what is tributary versus what is paper and issue that amount again to some other user, which. If then the vacant property becomes, um, occupied. Could then flow more tributary flow, so it's a, it's a real issue to think about. We did not, we don't have that in our policy. And I don't think it will affect the project, but it's something to think about. Yeah, I, I think, I think six months, there, there is probably a likelihood that something similar to that would be in there as well, as you consider non-conforming uses. Uh, not just stale or stagnant use, but non-conformities, um, most zoning ordinances, especially in North Carolina. Are going to give you a basically a sunset provision of a non-conforming use or lot within a hundred and eighty days. And so if you lapse more than a hundred and eighty days with your use in a particular structure, if you're considered to be non-conforming. Then you potentially could not even go back and, 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 uh, I'll say reignite that use. At that site, therefore, no allocation will be pulled because the use is non-permissible anymore. Our policy doesn't get that far down in the weeds, it's probably something we should look at long term. Um, but again, for the sake of tonight's conversation, it's, it's probably good for us just to, uh, get on the same page in terms of where our existing policy actually is. And then, um, if, if this project is approved, we'll be under ten thousand gallons of allocation. And I, I'm already, uh, uh, planning and prepared to, uh, talk about some changes maybe made to the policy with our, um, limited amount left, um, for the foreseeable future. Until we, uh, you know, find, find some of those things we discussed in November. Make a motion to approve the site plan and the sewer allocation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's two votes. All those opposed? I counted two high votes, is that correct?
Oh, it's more than two.
Okay.
Four.
Three. Four, okay, now everybody, thank you. Votes were zero. There was only two, we would have had a problem, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. All right, next item on the. Agenda is the pilot study and advanced treatment of emerging contaminants.
Yes, this is Reed Barton, let me, uh.
Reed.
Hey there, coming through well on audio for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, are you seeing my PowerPoint screen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right, um, so I'm here with Bill Dobeg and thanks for, um, having us back. Excited to be here to talk about that, the outcome of the pilot study. So in our, uh, next couple of minutes. We'll talk about the, the background of the project, um, the pilot operation, uh, the, the results. And conclusions, uh, cost and, and finally recommendations for a path forward. So project, project background, um, the project, th- this is, uh. Sorry, uh, the project is, is focused on solving, uh, issues with quality and quantity. Uh, quality being issues in the Hall River with, uh, contaminants. And quantity, uh, dealing with, uh, growth that's coming, uh, to the town. And so the project approach is to move forward with, uh. With advanced treatment and an expansion at the water treatment plant. Um, but to do that, uh, we've had this stopping point, so we got to the point where we said, all right, we need to expand the plant and we need advanced treatment. But which advanced treatment is needed was, was kind of where the water supply master plan left off. And so we moved after that into, um. A pilot study, so a, a couple more things about that, about the quantity issue, and, and this is recap, hopefully, I, I'm not going to spend more than two minutes on recap. But it, it helps tee up the conversation so everybody feels like they, you know, they're, they're all at the same starting point for the, the discussion that's coming. Um, so this graph is a projection of your water demand. Blue, uh, is your max day, the maximum in a given year that your water customers are demanding instantaneously for water. Um, and you can see, is my cursor showing up, can you guys see that right there? No, uh, can you see that? It is showing up, okay, great, so, so solid blue line is history, you know, this is your actual water demand. And then we're projecting into the future that max day demands are going to continue to grow. And the point of this is that your current water plant can produce two MGD. So your ability to meet this max day demand, which is generally the summer months, you know, we're talking about two to three months in the summer. Is going to become in question in a couple of years, you know, we're here in twenty twenty one. Uh, it won't, the, uh, we've talked about with, with manager Kennedy, how this data appears to be lagging a little bit, it might be twelve to eighteen months later than this data shows. I think there's been some, a little bit of slowness in Chatham Park getting, uh, their, uh, their buildings built, but this day is coming, whether it's in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty five. Um, additional capacity will be needed at the water plant. Um, so that study that I mentioned from two thousand and eighteen, the water supply study had a forty year outlook. And it said, all right, how do we meet water supply demand for Pittsboro for forty years? And obviously, it's going that long out into the future, there's more than one solution, right, it's a series of solutions. So I, I won't hatch all that out, but the first step, so again, you see this blue line coming up again, that's your demand for water. And the orange line is your ability to meet that demand, it's your ability to produce drinking water. And so we want the orange line to always stay above the blue line, we never want it to cross. Because if it crosses, you had more customers opening their faucets demanding water than your system could provide, right? And that, that, that means your elevated tanks run dry and it's a bad scenario. So the project that, the, the, the first step in that is expanding your existing water plant and adding advanced treatment. So that's, that's what this first orange line jump is, if we can get that done before twenty twenty five. And have it jump up and create capacity in your water system. And then the next jump, while this graph shows that it has to happen before twenty forty. Is the, uh, it, it will probably happen here bef- between twenty thirty and twenty thirty five, when the regional Jordan Lake plant comes online, for which. Uh, the town will have a three million gallon a day capacity, so this jump in reality will probably happen back here. As you can see that, those two jumps get you twenty, more than twenty years into the future for water supply. All right, so that's, this is big picture stuff, uh, and, and I should have said at the beginning, uh. Ask me any questions and Bill, you know, stop us, if you have questions, uh, we are going to try and go fast. Because, uh, we've got about twenty minutes worth of content here. So that water supply study that was in two thousand and eighteen said, okay, uh, we need to expand the plant and add advanced treatment. First step is recommend a pilot study, that's been going on all of twenty twenty. Uh, it's done now, we're going to show the results to you tonight. Um, where we're hoping to go is to, if possible tonight, or at least lay the groundwork tonight, select an advanced treatment. Uh, technology based on the data from the pilot study. Next steps after that are pursue project funding and initiate design and construction. Okay, so. Um, wanted to share with you because this is a context item for a lot of what you're about to see. Uh, working with staff, there's a lot of different ways you could have set up a treatment goal. And we specifically set up a treatment goal for PFAS. The goals that we eventually arrived on was ninety percent, and I should probably say the words at least. At least ninety percent removal of all identified PFAS compounds, which we're currently can measure about fifty out of the projected thousands. Ninety cent, ninety percent removal of those identified PFAS compounds summed up together. So if you have fourteen different PFAS compounds, species that have been shown to be in the river and. Let's say we're measuring a thousand parts altogether, we're. We're basing our cost estimates for design and, uh, for construction and operation on being able to remove ninety percent or greater of the sum total of those. That's, a- and I, and I'll say that the reason we're writing a goal, we're making a goal for the project is because these are unregulated, there's not. The EPA doesn't have a goal for us, so that, that, that's the reason for, that, that is an unusual thing, picking, picking a goal. Uh, if you want to talk about, more about that, we, we, we certainly can. So Bill, I'm going to pass it to you and Bill's going to talk about the actual results and the conclusions we draw from the pilot study.
Okay, great, so one of the first steps we did was to look at the data for contaminants in the Hall River. And then present that to staff and talk to them about their concerns with, uh, treating these contaminants. And what that revealed was that we have certain target contaminants that the whole team agreed are the top concerns. Per and polyfluoroalkyl substances was number one, PFAS is the abbreviation. One four dioxide was number two, it, so those were the top two in by far, from a health concern point of view, the top two concerns. Uh, lesser, but still, uh, merited investigation in the pilot testing. Were the broad spectrum personal care and pharmaceutical products, because there are upstream discharges. So we did check for removal of PPCPs, that's personal care and pharmaceutical products. And also in the past, the plant has had concerns with compliance with the disinfection by product regulations. And we know that those are getting tighter for the brominated species. And sometimes the river has bromide at, at an elevated concentration which aggravates that, so we looked at all four of those. Next slide. All right, so let me overview the testing, when we identified those target contaminants, we then identified what treatment methods will address those target contaminants. And concluded that granular activated carbon, ion exchange and reverse osmosis will address the PFAS. And then advanced oxidation process, UV AOP. Or reverse osmosis can be used for the one four dioxide. So what you're seeing here, i- the photo is from your plant's filter gallery. And you can see all the different treatment trains for granular activated carbon, which are the, uh, four inch diameter clear PVC columns. Ion exchange, which are the two inch diameter clear PVC columns, so the more narrow ones. And then for the a- advanced oxidation UV reactors, which are in the middle there between the columns. And I do have this picture behind me, uh, as my background, so you can keep seeing it during the whole presentation. So that's, those trains go to the next slide, Reed. And this is the reverse osmosis pilot that we put in the high service pump station, your high service pump station. So we already have water under pressure to go through the RO. Next slide. So now let's go to the pilot results. And we are going fast because we presented a, a fair amount of this back in August. The, this shows the total PFAS, so that's the sum of all the PFAS compounds we measured, as Reed mentioned earlier. So this is where we're wanting a goal of ninety percent removal. So by plotting C over C zero, that's the concentration coming out of the pilot train. Divided by the concentration going into the pilot concentration, uh, into the train, C zero is coming in. So when that equals one, that means you're not removing anything, concentration coming out equals concentration in. So that's why we use C over C zero as the Y axis here versus time of the pilot operation. And, uh, when it hits one, that means it's not removing anything and it can actually go above one if you keep operating because it can leach off some of the removed compounds. So when we say a goal of, let's say fifty percent removal, that means if you look at the point five. On this Y axis for C over C zero, you can see that three of the trains hit that point five. Um, after about two months, so if that were your goal, those three trains would have to be changed in two months. The, those are just a couple of the carbons and one of the ion exchange. But most people want to remove more than fifty percent, in this case, we agreed on ninety percent removal, which is a C over C zero point one. And only a few of the trains met that for up to four months. So Reed, let's go to the next slide, which zooms in on the three trains which met our goal of ninety percent removal for at least four months. So similar plot, C over C zero is a Y axis, time is the X axis. And you can see the trains that actually met the goal. The light blue is Calgon F four hundred GAC, granular activated carbon with ten minutes empty bag contact time. Plus a Dowex PSR two plus ion exchange resin with two and a half minutes empty bag contact time. So the ion exchange resin was after the GAC in series. And you can see that, uh, stayed below point one for a full four months, meeting the goal. But at that four months, you would have to change out the media to keep meeting the goal. Um, the other two that met the goal, the green one is just adding UV AOP ahead of it, this dark green, uh, curve. So that's UV AOP and then having the same Calgon F four hundred, ten minutes, followed by an exchange for two and a half minutes. The purple one is the reverse osmosis. And, um, reverse osmosis did meet the goal of ninety percent removal on, on most all the data, but it also had a couple of outliers. Which ma- makes a couple of good points, out, outliers are going to happen, it can be lab error, sampling error. It can be, uh, something real like leakage through a gasket. So the fact, the fact that we had a couple of outliers with reverse osmosis, which is by far the best treatment technology. Kind of shows you why you don't want a goal of one hundred percent removal, you just can't, you can't meet it. And you can't prove it because there's detection limits on this stuff too, is another reason. You, you want a reasonable goal like ninety percent or something like that. Okay, next slide, so that shows the three.
Question while we're, while we're on there, it seemed like in our last update, you said that, and then I think it was the UV in front of the others, that that seemed like it might be a, a novel. I guess revelation about the, the treatment of this.
Yeah, we were real excited that it added about, uh, half a month to one month on the life of the GAC and ion exchange. Um, when we punched out the cost though, and you'll see that later, it, it costs more, uh, than that one month is worth. If, if that's the only reason for UV AOP, but remember, the main reason you would ever do UV AOP is. But remember, the main reason you would ever do UV AOP is for the one four dioxide. And it turns out, the past year at least, one four dioxide has been non-detect. Because the state really got after the upstream dischargers on one four dioxide where they have a regulation. They don't have a regulation on PFAS compounds and it'll be many years, you know, they, in, in. A few years EPA may do a limit on PFAS plus BFOA, but that's only two out of thousands. So it'll be many years before the health issues of PFAS are really fully addressed.
And, and the four month standard really goes to maintenance costs that we'll talk about coming up here.
Yes, yes, you'll see, we're going to show costs.
Yeah, and in commissionership, I'll just throw in there. It's good, it's good that we kept the data rolling past August. At the time of August, it appeared that the UV was going to make it even more significant.
But you can see those curves kind of come together after August.
With, yeah, at, at August, the data was looking like the curves were separating and that the UV was going to add months. To the, how long the GAC would last. It ended up adding weeks, not months. And that, and that is something that in some waters, everybody's water is a little bit different. There's a lot goes into water chemistry and that's the reason you do site specific piloting. And, and in this case, I can tell you that there, there's another pilot we did with very similar scenarios. In North Carolina. About eighteen months ago. And a number of things in this pilot have gone differently. And, and so it just shows the value of looking at Pittsburgh water and how it's going to react to these technologies.
And gentlemen, if you could elaborate just to touch more on these outliers as we're looking at this line chart. The outliers for reverse osmosis, do we have an additional chart for future months beyond? August, September?
Yeah, this is all the data we have so far. That said, we. We talked to Adam about keeping everything there just in case you guys ask for more data. So we can go back and get more if you need it.
But we didn't take samples.
You can see the last sample was late October. But we can go grab one right now.
But, but you speak a little bit more if you would please on, on the fact, your, your, your sense that these were outliers on the reverse osmosis.
Yeah, so in Brunswick County, we ran for a year and a half and didn't have outliers of this magnitude. So it, it's surprising, but. The outliers happen. We did have some outliers even in Brunswick County. And you can see that you have small outliers, even the, the first sample of the RO had a small outlier near the point one. But these large outliers are concerning. It could be that there's a leaky gasket, something like that, but it also could be just lab error. It could be, you know, false. If it was just one of them, I would very much discount it, but the fact that we had two of them. There may be something to it.
And, and they're juxtaposed by such an extremely low observation.
In between, yeah, absolutely. But keep in mind, there's, really they're juxtaposed by all of those other data points because RO does not have this. Getting used up feature that the GAC does. So I do think if we had a lot more data, the lot more data, most of them would stay near zero.
And, and reverse osmosis, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also doesn't suffer the breakthrough.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I agree. It, it would, if we ran it for two years, most of the data would be near zero. It'd just have a few of these outliers that are. Hard to explain because it could be from who knows what, lab error, sampling error. Or a, a, a leaky gasket. That's something we didn't really, you know, it's a small pilot plant. We didn't really take it apart looking for leaks.
And Commissioner Bond, it's, that, that's some of the stuff I'm sure Mr. Barker, Mr. Dalbiggen will, will also cover is. Talking about the, you know, the difference of treatment and how GAC and reverse osmosis. How the, the different, you know, be it a membrane, be it a material media. You know, the longevity of those types of things and, and how we looked at both, you know, short term solutions. With, you know, capital costs of those types of things, as well as trying to program those out over, you know, a couple of decades and seeing. How much, you know, the replacement values and the replacement schedules of those different either media or membrane. Kind of factored into the overall conversation with this.
Thank you.
Okay, so conclusions from the pilot testing, the combined GAC plus IX did great. For, for the target contaminants, reverse osmosis did great. Both of those technologies demonstrated superior performance and can achieve a ninety percent PFAS removal goal. So that's like the number one conclusion. GAC as a treatment method by itself is less desirable than GAC plus IX. For some of the short chain PFAS compounds, they're not going to be regulated for many years. But we do want to think about those in the long term. So in the long term, you, you'll want that IX, we think. To go with the GAC in combination. UV AOP extended the life of the GAC for total PFAS by two to four weeks as we talked about. But the main reason for the UV AOP, maybe on the next slide is for the. One four dioxide, if you want a treatment beer for one four dioxide. So let's go to that, one four dioxide. When we presented in August, we had no results because it's non-detect for eight straight months of the pilot testing total. So what we did, we agreed to do a lab test and took some of your filtered water. Took it to our lab where we can do these advanced tests and spiked in some one four dioxide. And then we treated it with UV AOP, that's ultraviolet advanced oxidation process. And we proved that we can remove the one four dioxide, ninety percent removal. So that can be done with the UV AOP if that becomes an issue again. Currently, it's not, you know, because of the non-detect. Okay, so we also did not in August have data on pharmaceuticals and personal care products. Now we do have data, next slide. So the data showed that GAC and reverse osmosis remove greater than ninety percent. Of the pharmaceuticals and personal care products. So you're getting that ninety percent target met with all, all your target compounds. With the technologies we're recommending. Ion exchange and UV AOP do not remove appreciable amounts of PPCPs. So as long as you have GAC or RO in your treatment train, you're going to meet your PPCP goal. Next. Brominated disinfection byproducts. So here, you, you meet your disinfection byproduct limits. They're currently trihalomethanes, haloacetic acids, but there's concern they may get tighter in the future, especially for brominated species. We found that GAC and reverse osmosis are very effective at reducing the levels of brominated DBP formation. Because they remove the precursors. Ion exchange and UV AOP did not lower those formations appreciably.
Bill, would you mind giving us a couple of examples of what a brominated disinfective byproduct may be?
Sure, sure. So. Chloroform and bromoform are trihalomethanes. So bromoform means it is brominated, it has bromide all around the carbon. So that's a brominated THM and there are brominated haloacetic acids, tri-bromoacetic acid. Dichloro-bromoacetic acid. There are a bunch of haloacetic acids that include chlorine and bromine in them.
Bill, let me throw, maybe back up one step from that. So when we disinfect water in water treatment, we put a, a chemical, you, you're using chlorine. And that's the most typical disinfectant to use. When you put a disinfectant in the water, it's such a strong chemical. That if any of these, what Bill is calling precursors, any of these other constituents are in the water. They can react with that chlorine and create carcinogens, things that cause cancer. And that's the big picture of this. So the, the EPA and the state regulate about a, a list of these. It's, it was about nine, Bill, not ten.
Five haloacetic acids and four trihalomethanes.
So there, these are chemicals that get formed when we throw chlorine in the water. And there's other things in there that react with the chlorine in a, in a way we're not intending. And it creates these chemicals. So what, what we do in water treatment is we, we've removed the precursors, the thing, we have to put the chlorine in. At the end of the treatment process. So we try to get as much of those precursors out of the water. And what Bill's talking about is this emerging contaminant that's not regulated yet, but EPA is watching closely. Is brominated forms of these precursor compounds. And we know they form things like bromoform, which is bad. And so instead of trying to remove bromoform, we get the precursors out. And so the conclusion is that GAC and RO provide excellent removal of those precursors. So that you would not form. These disinfection byproducts, or if you did, it would be very, at very low levels. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, overall conclusions, costs now and recommendations. So conclusions, the options of combined GAC plus IX, granular activated carbon plus ion exchange. And the option of reverse osmosis, both demonstrated superior performance. Can achieve a ninety percent total PFAS removal goal. So we are fine with either of those options from a treatment perspective. You'll get into cost and schedule later. GAC and RO both provide excellent PPCP removal and excellent reduction in brominated DBP formation. UV AOP provided excellent reduction of one four dioxide levels. However, the twenty, in twenty twenty, the upstream discharges of one four dioxide into the Haw have decreased significantly. It's non-detect all year. Excellent. Now the cost. So the post-treatment, this particular slide is just on the advanced treatment. We'll get to the expansion. In the next, it's the third column. So the post-treatment is listed on the left. And the three we're showing are the three that we showed you made the shortlist as far as lasting at least four months. So granular activated carbon plus ion exchange is the first row. Capital cost to, for six MGD treatment, because you need to expand to six MGD. So the capital cost for that is eleven to thirteen million for the GAC plus IX. The low end of the range is outdoor contact. The capital cost for the conventional expansion, meaning you still got to expand, you have a two MGD plant. You got to get it up to six MGD and that will cost about thirty one million. So the total capital cost of advanced treatment plus expanding your existing plant. Is forty two to forty four million for the option of GAC plus ion exchange with your treatment. Then if you add the AOP, UV AOP, it takes the advanced treatment part to fourteen to seventeen million. And the total capital cost to forty five to forty eight million. And finally, for the option of low pressure reverse osmosis, the RO costs twenty three million. But you also need concentrate treatment. We know that's coming and it's going to be a battle. That we anticipate, take the range of cost for that concentrate treatment to be five to thirteen million. And when I say it's going to be a battle, it's a battle on permitting. We don't know exactly what the state will mandate on the permitting of the concentrate. So that's why the wide range, five to thirteen million. Now, if you add that plus the conventional treatment, you get a total of fifty nine to sixty seven million capital cost. Next slide, any, any questions on this one before we go?
Bill. This is Michael Fiocco. What, one of the questions I do have, and it seems like an appropriate time to ask this, is you just mentioned the concentrate. And that being a permitting issue. So does GAC and IX plus the UV AOP either scenario? Is there a byproduct? Is there a loss of water? In those treatments?
Great question. There is no water with those treatments. But there is a byproduct, meaning once the activated carbon is loaded up with PFAS. Or the ion exchange is loaded up with PFAS, there is a cost of disposal and we included those costs.
So that's kind of a.
We're including cost to deal with the concentrate.
And it's a sludge type of.
It's a solid media. It, it still looks like granular activated carbon, which is coal. So it looks like sand except black, you know, in larger particles. But it, it's a solid that is combustible. So for granular carbon, it would be a hazardous waste incinerator eventually. It could be a, a solid, solid waste disposal in the short term.
But, but there is no water, water loss, which is also, which is associated with the RO.
Correct, pretty much negligible. You would occasionally backwash. So there is a very small water loss, but it, it's less than one percent.
Okay, great, thank you.
Whereas with RO, it's roughly ten percent.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah. Okay, so this gives you some advantages and disadvantages to really dig into the comparison of these advanced treatment alternatives. So let's start on the left, the first column is the advanced treatment. So we're talking about the same three that met the goals of that lasting four months. Now, the capital cost you also saw before, it's the same range, eleven to thirteen million for the GAC plus IX. With the low end assuming outdoor contactors, fourteen to seventeen. When we add in the AOP, twenty three for the RO again. But what's new on this chart is we're giving you some life cycle cost comparison. And we're actually going to plot it in the next slide, show you a graph in the next slide. But what we found, the one reason we look at life cycle costs is in some jobs, Brunswick County for example. There's a payback, meaning one, like RO may have high capital cost. But its O and M cost may be lower to where it, it gets closer or even wins in life cycle cost. That did not happen here. You can see the life cycle cost of the RO is indeed higher than the life cycle cost of the GAC plus IX. Sorry, go ahead, question?
Why was that?
Why was that? Because the GAC and plus IX in this job lasted longer. It lasted about four months, whereas in Brunswick County, it only lasted about two months.
And so the longer lifespan of the filtration medium. Meant less frequent disposal cost of that spent filtration medium. But what, what, were there also additional increased costs for the reverse osmosis?
Yeah, we factored in the disposal of cost for both of them. In the case of the reverse osmosis, it's in the concentrate number. And we did include concentrate disposal, you know, operating that. So it's full life cycle cost for all the options. So it does include disposal for all options.
And what, what is the mode of disposal for the concentrate that you imagined?
So the high end is actually an, an advanced treatment of. Airating out the PFAS compounds to a foam and then destroying that. Or disposing of it in a hazardous waste landfill. The low end, that, that's likely to be acceptable for many years, is to take the concentrate and treat it with something like ion exchange. So that kind of shows you why, it, it kind of makes sense that GAC plus ion exchange is going to be cheaper. Because you're kind of double treating, you're taking your concentrate and treating it again with the ion exchange.
Okay, final question on this slide, what is, I think I have an idea, but what's an outdoor contactor?
Okay, it do, it just does not have a building around it to save a little bit of money. That, that said, if we did a metal building, it doesn't add a lot of cost.
It, it would be non-typical to put these facilities completely out in the weather. It's done in Florida, you know, on the Gulf Coast where they, they don't get cold weather. But we were just including your cheapest option versus, you know, more typical option. Commissioner Bond, it's, you know, the, the. To treat the concentrate or not to treat the concentrate is, is a, is a tough question. It's a policy question, really more than a technical question. I mean, in theory. When, you know, to use a very simple example, if you took a glass of water. When, you know, to use a very simple example, if you took a glass of water and you scooped it up out of the HAW River. You got HAW River water, and you were able to magically with your hand. Grab everything you didn't want in that drinking water and throw it back in the river. That's essentially what RO does, you know, it's not putting anything back in the river that wasn't already in the river. It's not creating PFAS, it's just rejecting PFAS. But because you guys are in the middle of the state. And and our experience doing this, one one other time in North Carolina and multiple times in other states, we anticipate that. There'd be pushback from those who have water intakes downstream on that river, on the same river source.
Yeah, so you you could do reverse osmosis. It's an option we're willing to do, but it would take a lot of time to get that permit. And you would definitely have to have concentrate treatment. You know, I I think Fayetteville reached out to you guys already about their concerns.
Yeah, so it's it's, and so to head them off, if you wanted to go with RO. We were trying to be upfront about the likely cost. So you could, if you were able to get the state to permit it without any treatment, you could subtract fifteen to thirteen million out of this RO cost. And and that makes it look a lot closer, you know, you can look at the numbers. If you took fifty five. Million and took five million out of it, out of it, you would be. Equal to the low end of the one above it, UV plus GAC and IX. So it really, the cost difference largely comes down to this concentrate treatment. But the likelihood, there's no precedent right now in the state for what you'd be asking for. So that's why it'd be likely a little more time, more public hearings to get it through. And at the end of the day, you would have to negotiate and and and, you know, we would help, but you would negotiate with the state on. What do I need to monitor and what do I need to treat on this concentrate? So we tried to reflect a range we thought was likely or possible, so it's not misleading.
Thank you.
And one more question. Where it's notated at the bottom, cost to expand existing conventional. Water treatment plant systems are not included in this table.
So. This particular table is just about the advanced treatment. The prior table showed that capital cost. So you, the the capital cost of the conventional treatment is that thirty one million.
Okay, okay. All right.
Right.
Yeah, the second table is just to zoom in on the advanced treatment, so we can really focus on the pros, cons differences.
Okay.
And did you by chance include the costs of energy to run the low pressure reverse osmosis?
Oh, yes.
It's higher.
Yeah, energy, chemicals, labor, it's all included.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yes, one question before we move on. If we did nothing at all. And we did one of these options. What would be the effect on Fayetteville?
You mean if you did no treatment to the concentrate?
Let's say we did nothing. Compared to doing something.
Meaning you did none of the options.
I I follow the question. What what the mayor is asking is if you if you went on as we are now, you're not removing PFAS from. The the river, there's there's no change, because right now, some PFAS comes in. You know, it comes in and partially goes back to the river through the sewer sewer system. But you are not, I think, I think the the main point you're trying to make, Mayor, is that. You are not creating any PFAS, you're not a generator of PFAS. Whatever comes down, same thing with one for doxing. You're dealing with what comes down the river and and the amounts we're talking about taking out of the river. And putting back in. So unmeasurable outside of a hundred foot area where you're mixing the water.
Right. So if I I guess the point is that if if we spend the money. And take care of our citizens, which is the reason, the primary reason that we would be doing these things. Then it allows Fayetteville to do nothing.
Oh, no, they're doing the same, they're pursuing the same type of issue. They're actually moving into pilot testing of GAC now.
Okay.
You you're whether whatever technology you take, you you use, it will have a very drop in the bucket effect of the amount of PFAS in the HAW. You won't.
If you think about it, two MGD is a very small portion of, and that's that's on your max date. You're normally one MGD or less, it's a very small portion of the HAW.
I I very much appreciate you.
Thank you.
Putting that in context in terms of order of magnitude. And moreover, going back to the mayor's original question, I think the cynical response might be that. If we don't do anything. The livers and digestive systems and other organs of Pittsboro drink water drinkers are actually serving to filter some of those contaminants out. So that the people of Fayetteville don't get them.
Right.
That's a very gruesome cynical response, but. It it if. I I think it's probably. Accurate to say that if indeed we we installed RO without concentrate disposal. That we would be putting more of. The perfluorinated polyfluorinated compounds back into the river than, again, if we did nothing and continue to drink the water. Because again, we are absorbing some amount of those PFAS compounds.
That that is tech, that is technically true. Yeah, that's.
Horrifying, but thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do show some advantages and disadvantages, so let me make a couple of points here. You've heard GAC plus IX is the lowest cost. It's very effective, all of these are very effective, that's how they made the shortlist. It's a good one on schedule. And especially the fact that you can fast track it, and we're going to talk about how you can beat that three to four years by fast tracking. And then disadvantages are the frequent change up every four months. You've got to change all of it, or you change half of it every two months. Which is more likely what you do. Whereas the LPRO, it's the best technology, great effectiveness, but it's got higher cost, the concentrate. And the schedule mainly to permit that concentrate. And it also has a site space issue, it'd be pretty hard to squeeze it in on the existing plant side. Okay, so that gets us through this slide. Yeah, so that's just pointing out, that's the, that meets your goal at least cost, you know, it's kind of an engineer thing, we've got to say. And here, we, I told you, we'd give you a graph. This is the graph of cumulative cost for life cycle cost of the reverse osmosis versus GAC plus ion exchange. And we we show all the different options. And this is where, as Mr. Bonnet asked earlier, it's different than Brunswick County. Brunswick County reverse osmosis crossed, the lines crossed after twenty plus years. But in your particular case, because the costs stay kind of stable, you have parallel lines. And the light green reverse osmosis with high concentrate just keeps chugging along much higher than the light. Yellow, which is the GAC plus IX at a much lower. Life cycle cost.
And there is a small convergence, you can see between the red line and the blue, this light blue line. You can see it happening over that twenty year period, they're slightly coming closer together.
Yeah, that's where we were, we were saying we're disappointed at the UVAOP cost. It's operating cost was quite high. That's the light blue is adding the UVAOP. Okay, now I'm going to turn it back to Reid.
All right, so we're going to talk about, I've got two slides on recommendations. I would, I don't have the word draft on here, but probably should. These are draft recommendations for your consideration. We are, as as Bill said, the conclusion is that GAC IX or RO both meet your treatment goals from a technical standpoint. And so here are some 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 thoughts that came out of discussion with with staff from the town. On why GAC and IX may be. Maybe the right choice that, you know, we could, you know, I think we should discuss that. But here here's why you may want to pick GAC and IX, you know, provide superior performance and can achieve ninety percent removal. So can the RO, we've talked about that. It can be incorporated into the existing water treatment plant pretty readily, requiring less space. When compared to RO, it does not require an MPDS permit, that's your permit from the state to discharge water back to the river. It does not require an MPDS permit and can be implemented on a shorter timeline as a result of that. It has a lower capital and life cycle cost when compared to RO. And it is more efficient with the use of energy and water loss when compared to RO. So unlike RO, it it is a function, its performance is a function of how frequently you change out the media. But this all assumes frequent media change out. Two more recommendations, the facility improvement should be designed for future incorporation of UVAOP. Assuming if it GAC and IX are selected. And Pittsburgh should continue to monitor for one for doxing in the in the HAW River. If the levels get elevated again. Moving forward with the UVAOP system would be recommended. And that was something that that manager Kennedy started. Said earlier in the meeting.
So on that, do we have the analysis of it? It seems like it's about one million to six million to install that initially. Would that be the cost to install that two years from now or or five years? I mean, I don't have a calculation or whatever, but is is there a cost advantage to installing it as a part of this project?
Oh, I see, about the UVAOP, well, yes, if you knew that you were going to need it three years, you know, four years from now or something like that, installing it now would be cheaper. Only from a sense of everything, construction and equipment goes up over time. But we're going to, to use the word that. That Chris used stub out, you know, we would make it so. You can build the new facilities and not throw away any of what you've built. You know, we would provide valving and a way to pipe it in and add this new process in the middle of the plant. Building it right now, I mean, we could proceed with design and continue to watch it. But investing in the design, the the investing in the construction of it, which was several million dollars. May not be needed if the effect of what the state is working on with the city of Greensboro to reduce. So I think everybody's aware that the state is working with the city of Greensboro to identify where the one for doxing is coming from in part. It's not all coming from Greensboro, but part of it is. And through their wastewater treatment plant, through some of their industrial. Customers, and they're, they've been working on eliminating that. And particularly, and they particularly made seemingly made some good progress on it. And and we think that's why we're not seeing it in the river. Will that hold? Will that remain? You know, right now, the spotlight is on that company and and that region. When the spotlight goes away, will it go back? And nobody knows, that's why the recommendation is to keep monitoring.
So you would, you would do the design now so we can properly account for space and everything in the facility. But just not the equipment and installation costs.
We would at least have to do a high level version of that design, probably not a detailed design. But enough design that we are reserving sufficient space and, you know, kind of a. We'll call it preliminary design of it, we don't need to take that portion to final design, you know, because you don't need to build it right now.
Right, okay, makes sense.
And commissionership to that to that point. And conversation staff has had with CDM Smith was, you know, what is our best path forward? You know, do we, you know, go ahead and implement it and just say, okay, is it there? And if it's redundant or superfluous, then it's just redundant superfluous. But if for whatever reason. You know, that we go through the process, obviously, as y'all know, we're going to have a lot of demands on our enterprise fund, a lot of requests for dollars. And I would say it probably my recommendation to the board that. Given the last year has been successful and and having a non detect for one for doxing, we hope that continues. I think it would be ill advised to to design and not account for it. But if we can say maybe five million dollars right now, that could go to probably a a more. Important project, as long as we stay in that range of non detect. Obviously, if it pops up, then we'll pivot very quickly and implement it. But to break it down, we're basically betting. You know, that we're not going to have to pay that five million dollars now, knowing that maybe in a decade, we might pay eight million dollars. We're going, we're going to place a bet on the table right now, saying that we're not going to have to. But we're not going to be so short sighted not to try to stub it out.
And we're not going to maintain it over that time.
Correct, technologies may improve. You know, there's no reason to create a a time capsule of infrastructure in the plant that's that's not being used. As you all know, anything that's mechanical in nature, if it's not used, it generally deteriorates quicker than not. So if we're not going through the process, it's probably just wasted dollars.
Yeah. And that maybe segues into, I've got, I think, four slides left. And they're all about path forward. So the path forward and and starts with selecting whether it's RO or GAC IX. Then selecting an implementation option. And so we've already talked about the need, we're under kind of under the timeline. Of what's feasible for a plant expansion, that takes a couple of years to accomplish. And you're going to be running short on water in a couple of years. So the the need to start everything right away is there. But my next slide, and I'm just going to tee this up, is to talk about, could we get. A smaller. Installation of advanced treatment in quicker. While we're also simultaneously working on the bigger picture, the bigger project, right? And so we referred to that earlier as a fast track, so that's that's my next slide. So that's another question, do we want a fast track or not a fast track? And then begin implementation, so implementation, you know, lining up funding. I think there's a lot of good state and federal level funding, you know, one to two percent interest loans for this type of work. I think you guys would be very competitive for it, possibly even get some grants. Jumping right into the environmental reports and the preliminary engineering reports, which are going to be required for USDA funding applications. And then. Once that groundwork is laid, it'll take a couple of months to lay that, then jumping into formal design where you create construction documents and specifications. You get your permits and you start construction. So that's the path forward. Let me share two options, both of these are ideas that were, you know, came through discussion with staff. About how do, you know, understanding that, okay, a typical construction project where I did, I design it. And I get a contractor to build it, and I do go through all the procurement steps. You know, just now, one of this size, forty two million dollars, you know, we're talking about. You know, three. Three to four years until you're, from from the moment you start until you're realizing that completion of that project. And you've got treated water coming out of the plant that's gone through advanced treatment. So. Option one in the fast track has a step A and a step B. They both start at pretty much the exact same time. But step A is, has the goal of adding one million gallons of GAC treatment to the water plant. Quicker, you could think of it as an early milestone, but these are really two, almost like two separate projects running side by side. And so it would be a rapid design of GAC only. Because we can simplify the pieces of this. We can run design in, you know, roughly four months, permitting two months. Get a contractor on board, the moment he has his contract, he he can start ordering equipment. The lead time on some of this equipment is quite lengthy. You know, six to eight, possibly even nine months on some of it, that's what's driving the schedule being longer. So. Option one A. So let me phrase this a little different, option one and option two are only different in what I'm calling step A. Their step Bs are exactly the same, step B is finish the rest of the project, design the expansion. Their step Bs are exactly the same. Step B is finish the rest of the project, design the expansion and, and get the plant. At full capacity with advanced treatment. Option one A is a design build approach. And I want to highlight that word for you. Design build approach means is, is a traditional procurement method where you would say, I'm hiring my engineer. They're going to make a design. When they're done with the design, they give it to me as the owner and I'm going to hire a contractor. I'm going to give them the design and say, go build that contractor. They go build it. You have two contracts and they're, they do not overlap in time. Okay, that is going to take approximately eighteen to twenty four months to get one MGD of GAC treatment on site. So that's quicker, that's at least a year, a year to a year and a half quicker than just doing it all at once. As a normal project. Option two, you know, I mentioned option two for fast tracking, the only thing different is what's here under step A. This is taking step A and turning it into a design build delivery. Design build is the most typical delivery method that's used on the private side. It's very efficient. It's kind of a longer story of, of, of why it's not used. As much on the public side, uh, but it, it, it has been. Growing, the state, it used to be, you have to add special, special legislation to allow you to do a design build. But I think it was two thousand thirteen, the North Carolina legislature made it so public entities can do design build. So in this one, you can cut the schedule if you have one contract with one team, a designer and a contractor and their work overlaps. They're working at the exact same time. So, uh, you're, you're ordering equipment a lot sooner. You can cut the schedule down to possibly twelve months. And then, once construction of that fast track option is done, you would have the full design ready and go into a traditional construction of the remainder of the work. So this is, uh, what we're turning the fast track option. Anybody have any questions about that? That's a totally new idea being presented to the board. Maybe one of the significant parts about it is that in order for it to go fast, you couldn't. You couldn't do USDA or SRF loans for that portion of it because the purpose is to go fast and they will slow it way down.
It's, you hit right on where I was going to bring up to the board of. The, the reason option two A is so much more expedited is it basically means we have to pay cash or find some other mechanism. To keep us away from the LGC, SRF, USDA. If, if we can float the project without having to go through the more intensive funding cycles. That's what will hold us up. Just preparing the application for USDA takes months. And, and so for us to be able to, um, again, it's, it's the one MGD, so it's a reduced dollar amount. Um, again, with the eye of fast tracking the, the work. And so obviously, um, we've looked at some numbers and want to be conservative with it. Based on conversations we've had so far. Obviously, a lot of demands on the enterprise fund, especially the retained earnings. I think we could swing it, uh, with cash, maybe a little bit of loan proceeds. Maybe seek private loan funding. I, you know, go to a bank rather than go into. You know, a, a state agency or a federal agency for, for proceeds. You might pay a little bit on interest, but the interest, again, this is a very important issue for us in our citizenry. So, uh, you know, time is of the essence. And so we want to be creative with how we, uh, go through that procurement. Obviously, stay above board, do everything legally that we have to. That's, that's our charge with everything that we do. But we'll have to be a little more creative and, you know, and we've also talked about too, that. If, if for step A in either version. If, if we follow, you know, obviously the proper channels that we typically would. There are opportunities with SRF or maybe some others that you can actually get paid back for some of those things. You have to be very considerate of how you procure the first. Step, if you will, uh, but there are options there too. Again, that's kind of. It, it's a, it's a factor, maybe not the most important factor. Most important factor being time and just getting a, a product out so that we can, you know, provide good, clean, safe water for our citizen residents.
And then I would say that, I mean, personally, I see the advantages of design build versus design big build anyway. But we don't need to get into that debate, uh, this evening, but. The, um, can you remind what our current plant capacity is?
It's two. So this would be, um. Let me, let me explain why we chose one MGD. What mostly it's trying to stay within a dollar value that is feasible for a fast track. Because we know this isn't in your budget, you know, it's not just already reserved for this. You're, you would need. You know, we, we estimated, we put together a ballpark estimate of what it would cost to design build one MGD. And our estimate was two and a half to three million. So if you're wanting to reserve three million and hopefully it comes in a little under, but. Three million gets you one MGD. We didn't fully price out what two MGD is, but roughly add two million to that. So the idea is, yeah, you can keep adding stuff, but eventually it gets too much for a fast track financing.
And commissionership, our peak days get about one point two. In terms of demand. So I, I, I would say, and, and Reed or Bill, please correct me. You know, if you look at a, a year, you know, probably at least three hundred days, one's going to do us just fine.
Yes, all about what according, uh, talked with Adam at the plant superintendent about it. And he said that, uh, we'd have a hundred percent of the water flowing through current, current demand. Obviously, demand increases each year, but in, in the current year, if you had this in place, a hundred percent of the water would have gone through this filter. Ten of the twelve months, and then in those two peak months, you know, in the ballpark of twenty percent of your water would have had to bypass.
Okay, that, that's actually, that's what I want to make sure too, that we weren't, I mean, I guess having the concentration would be better, but. We would be effectively treating all of the water for, and, and it would be prioritized for the, the first million. And as needed, we would supplement with untreated or less treated.
And, and, and this same plan can be, you can add. To another MGD of treatment to it. And if that was the desire, I mean, this, this, this is flexible. We would need to, I don't, I don't think it would add. Possibly no time, if, if anytime, maybe a month, you know, I don't think we're talking about big changes to schedule. It would just add cost.
No, I think.
And it'd be pretty easy to add, like to go to one and a half and that would always meet your one point two. It just add more columns.
I, I think it's, it sounds like it's right sized for our current situation and demand. And then obviously we've got the, we, we would have the additional coming online as well, so.
Yeah. So the idea is, is you, you start all the permitting and the funding applications for the bigger project. At the same time, you're starting, uh, the fast track design build. And those take time, right? But your goal is to get a fully permitted construction. Package prepared and ready to bid. The moment you're done constructing your fast track.
And I'd say personally, I would prioritize the speed over the, the total for all months of the year. Because we have, we have an immediate problem that we know of, so. Um, that seems, seems like it. And sorry, John, all of you jumped in.
No, thank, thank you, Commissioner Shipp. Mr. Kennedy, uh, in terms of that, uh, approximate two months per year. That, um, demand on the system might exceed one million gallon per day and might, might go to one point two or what have you. Is there any chance that the new storage tank? Uh, that I think is, is planned to go into service soon, uh, could provide a buffer for that time? Yeah. And, and thank you, Mr. Bonds. I was actually going to bring that up. Is that there's some creativity that we can work with Adam Pickett, who's the plant ORC about how we float our tanks. Commissioner Bonds referring to, um, the new three hundred thousand gallon tank that the town's been vetting and hopefully to have online very soon. So when you look at our storage capacity, um, be it a half million gallon tank, a three hundred thousand gallon tank, a million gallon tank throughout town. We can float water capacities, um, within that chapel ridge and we also provide water to them that are not in town. That they, we, they have a tank that they float off of, so we can get creative with how we distribute water. Obviously, our capacities are our treatment capacity within a given day. But I think we can get creative with that. And, you know, be it we get creative with some water restrictions until we get to step B. You know, uh, making sure that, you know, folks have drinking water in, advanced in front of irrigation water. Um, and so trying to, trying to find some creative solutions to, uh, patch this up, so to speak, where it works for all parties. Until we get to the step B, I, I think we're prepared to, and I think we've got the right team at hand to, to find those creative solutions that we so desperately need. Yeah. So I'd like to, uh, dwell for a few more minutes in, um. The, um, the various disposal costs associated with the two different scenarios. So Mr. Barton and Mr. Dalbig, and if we could pause rather than moving forward immediately with these options. It may require circling back a bit, but I'm, I'm seeing, um. The five to thirteen million increased cost for reverse osmosis. For a six million gallon day ta, um, capacity, uh, advanced treatment system, reverse osmosis. But I don't see any disposal costs associated with the GAC. What, what, do, do we have that documented or, or is there a longer report where I could learn how many tons per year we're looking at disposing?
Yeah, we can punch that out real quickly. The reason you have capital cost for the concentrate treatment is that's required at your plant. The GAC disposal is by others. You know, you, uh, call up Calgon or whoever your GAC vendor is, they come and take it and they do the incineration.
Right.
And those costs are included.
Okay.
They, they were, they were definitely included in the life cycle cost analysis. So the third column, they're only included on RO. Because there's no capital cost for disposal of the media. That's why they're not in the second column.
Okay.
And, and it's, I will say that disposal of GAC is an emerging science right now as well. There are more questions than answers, like an example of a hot question that has been bouncing around for the last two years is. At what temperature do I need to incinerate GAC? Or, uh, what we, we usually, you usually, usually regenerate GAC. You don't throw it away. You put it in a furnace and you refire it for reuse. Uh, but there are different studies out there that have shown it can be regenerated. Others have said, no, the GAC never comes off of it. You have to dispose of it.
Fast never come, never comes off the GAC.
Right. There, there, I don't think there's conclusions yet. I think the industry is split on it and it's hard to know which. Which papers to trust, honestly, because there are conflicting papers on it.
Yeah. The most likely way it's headed is to have special incinerators that have higher temperature, special emission controls, things like that.
And, and at that point, do you damage the media and is it as effective the next time? There are, there are lots of things with that that are not fully known. If the EPA decides, and they may decide soon, that they're going to regulate. PFOA and PFOS, PFOS and PFOA as hazardous wastes, which they've considering. If they name those hazardous wastes, then the material would, would have to be treated as hazardous waste at that point.
And so it could not be landfill.
Yeah, it, it's currently, that is not a regulation, so it's currently landfill. It's burned in regular incinerators because there are lots of plants with GAC already. There's just no hazardous waste regulation for these yet.
One, one thing that is. You know, GAC is definitely the quickest way to forward. It is, I'll, I'll put this out there. It is not. Going to be as cost effective, but there is precedent, uh, for some utilities. Doing a fast track GAC option that eventually became. The, what they installed eventually became the concentrate treatment system, if, if you follow me. So they installed a partial GAC system and fast track. And then they made plans and went through the longer process of installing RO. And then they converted that GAC system that they installed to just treat their concentrate in the end. And if you, you know, that, that would probably have forward or something like that. If, if you wanted to go with RO, it's not priced here, it would. You know, it, well, actually it is priced here. It's.
That allows you potentially to expedite your fast track option. While not yet committing to your final decision of, of GAC versus RO.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And is ion exchange resin. Disposed of similarly to GAC?
Yes.
It's not, it's not regenerated like GAC is currently. It's a one time use.
Destroyed.
Yeah. There's research on regeneration, but right now it's, you're going to burn it or, or otherwise dispose of it hazardous waste landfill.
Thank you.
So, um, let me go back down here. I think I had one more slide and that.
Hey, Reed, before, go back one, one point that I don't think came out all that clearly. You do want to go ahead with the preliminary engineering of the full six MGD concurrent with the fast track. Because they have to be coordinated. We've been working on that, struggling with that for a couple of weeks here. You really got to have those two coordinated.
Right. You need to be making big picture decisions while you're laying out the fast track. Otherwise, there's gonna, there's gonna be mistakes and it's not gonna be as ideal.
Is there any effect? In the discussion of these very opt, these various options, particularly thinking longer term. If the town of Pittsburgh were to decide. To bring water back to Pittsburgh from Sanford. At the time that we, uh, finalize our city wastewater, uh, waste, uh, products down to Sanford.
Say that one more time. My cut, I don't, I don't know if it was your connection or mine. I, I jumped a little bit for me.
Look at it, our sewer problems. We have, as you probably are well aware, talked for a long, long time now of a line to Sanford. To pump down and use their wa, uh, waste treatment plant to process that. And the discussion has nearly always included an option of in the same right of way, building a separate line. That would bring water to Pittsburgh from Sanford. And the question I have is whether or not in this long range planning that we've talked about. That consideration is one that factors in.
It was considered as in the mix of possible sources. At the time, um, you, you know, there was, uh, different folks on staff, different folks involved in that discussion, uh, you know, but. It was. Thought that it should be, uh, something that's a little bit more of a, if it's needed as a, as a temporary, you know, or ten years or less. But not a, not a long-term solution to rely on Sanford. For that water supply. You know, I, I believe the number was in the ballpark of two MGD. Is that the, the, the number that was roughly?
Well, Reed, if, if I may, I can probably maybe able to jump in and.
Yeah, please.
If I'm grossly wrong about something, we're to jump back in. But Mayor, I think the, the, the thought was, again, we know we're gonna, even if we say today. Okay, yes, let's, let's fast track this. Let's go to Sanford and get water. Let's do a six MGD treatment. All those things aren't going to happen tomorrow. So I, I think the, uh, the first step is if, if the board's okay going with the fast track GAC treatment. Whether we're going GAC that also becomes GAC and IX or GAC that turns into RO and the GAC converts. GAC that also becomes GAC and IX or GAC that turns into RO and the GAC converts to the treatment of the RO byproduct. That would be kind of step A is just getting the initial GAC installed. Then if for whatever reason, I would say, I would say especially if we go the RO route. We would probably want to fast track the Sanford conversations. Sanford is gonna be sending us potable water. So it won't be a raw water, so it won't be a a treatment impact at our plant. It'll be water that circulates through our system. That conversation has been between two and three million gallons, because that's what the interbasin transfer that we've talked about. You know, we've got a two million gallon sewer line that's got capacity up to three. The thought is if we can exchange water, we can avoid some of that and get that line from two to three million gallons a day. That still probably doesn't fulfill our quantity water demand. Obviously, a lot of the conversation we're talking tonight is about quality, not quantity. But but quantity is gonna be a concern in the coming years. And so having conversations with Sanford. Right now, we're already. I'll say engaged, if you will, with a conversation, at least in concept. Of trying to decide whether Pittsburgh needs to be involved or not. Sanford's running wa- water lines, sixteen inch water lines up to the Monqueville Megasite. And so it would not be too much more trouble, obviously, a great number of miles. And money and all that that goes into that, but to just take that line and bring it to this bar Monqueville Road and create that loop. That we would then have down Sanford Road, Pittsburgh Monqueville Road with water. So looking at that and then understanding our our relationships with the Western intake partnership out of Jordan Lake. That starts at three and ultimately goes to six. You know, having six potentially out of the hall that would give us between, you know, nine and twelve. And then maybe adding two to three from Sanford, ultimate water capacity, getting us into the 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 load of mid teens in terms of a million gallons a day.
But I guess my question was also along the lines of, are we making an assumption or are we? Not considering at all as to whether or not at this stage of the game, the water coming up from Sanford.
The option was evaluated.
But as.
Determined to not be as.
But but did in that consideration was the assumption that the water coming from Sanford would already meet our goal of ninety six percent removal? Or we have to do it ourselves?
I think that assumption is there, but I think it's undetermined about what the quality of the water. That would be conveyed to us via the deep river. I I think Bill and Reed both have have talked about some of the. I think the hall is probably better studied at this point in terms of understanding PFOS and PFOL compounds before doxing. You know, as you look at a a watershed, the deep river is is very much a part of that chain. And so I think there is. Right or wrongly clouds of doubt regarding the deep river and whether. You know, the the treated water that we receive from Sanford as part of that exchange would meet that. That would very much be a conversation we would have is, you know, it's it's no so it's no, again, you know, we overuse the term, at least I do. The silver bullet idea of like, oh, great, we got water from Sanford. Oh, wait, it's not the quality isn't as good as we wanted it to be and it's and it's lesser than what we already have. That's no real fix.
Okay.
And your water quality task force did a pretty good job of pointing out how their wastewater plant has some of the highest PFAS in the state. It's something to be concerned about.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, Mayor, I think a lot of times when I think about the drivers for interconnects, it's for reliability. Redundancy, them helping you, you helping them in the in a time of of need for, you know, regionalization. Allowing rural areas to grow that can't grow without that 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 partnership. All those kinds of things, but but if you just think about it from a where does Pittsburgh's dollars go? Investing in your own supply infrastructure will always be a better return on investment. You know, you're you're paying for your own and infrastructure that continues year after year to serve you versus. You know, leasing that water.
And it's the way to address your issues quickly, both quality and quantity, as also noted by your task force.
Yes. I appreciate that. I just. In looking at some of the beginnings of this presentation and talking about the long term situation within Pittsburgh. And and the. Not the fast track, but beyond the fast track, what we might or might not do with that plant. In terms of the longer term after fast track. Might well be impacted by what decisions are made on bringing that water up. And I just wanted to ensure that we were thinking about that as well.
And Mayor, similarly, as we're having conversations about the Western intake partnership.
Right.
And the Seaforth plant that is proposed to, you know, bring water to the partners within that. You know, Jordan Lake is again kind of part of that water chain. And so. While it's a greater body of water and, you know, there's probably lesser concerns than directly pulling from the hall. It's been part of the conversations we've had as part of that effort to make sure that. You know, again, we're not saying, well, we have fifteen million gallons of water in town, but only six is reliable and clean. Good luck and figure out which one you get water from and, you know, pull pull the lever and see which one you get.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So Reed, do you have any more slides or?
I had one. This is the last slide and and it, you know, it kind of gets to the. Recommendations from the Water Quality Task Force Report, which came out pretty recently. You know, I would say that there's some overlap in. Some of the common themes, which is, you know, they they were recommending point of use solutions. Which is, you know, a community tap that people can come fill out, like a water filling station or, you know, there's there's there's. Half a dozen options out there for point of use treatment. And I I think the overall driver behind that is let's do something quick. Let's let's get an immediate. So we're for our for our part and the part we've been scoped to look at, you know, and working with staff. We've come up with this idea of a fast track for GAC. That doesn't have to be in competition with these other recommendations. You know, the the town may elect to do some type of point solution like. Buying, you know, I know one town that just bought water bottles for, you know, a certain number of water bottles per month per family if they requested it. You know, there's different options out there.
Reed, the the point of use recommendation is i- in conjunction, the the task force also recommended. Investing in adequate water supply treatment methods at the existing facility.
Yeah, so we we agree. I guess we're saying is.
We agree.
We agree. We full heartedly agree that you need to, the best bang for your buck is to to go at a quick solution at the source. You know, at where the water is treated in bulk, you may want to consider point of use options. We didn't consider that in our report, but there's logic to that. And the the driving logic overlaps the two reports. And then they also talked about educate the town citizens about what emergent contaminants. In a public awareness program, I think that's always to the benefit of of the community. And work with regional partners in in the state to mitigate sources of emerging contaminants in the hall. Absolutely. You know, the the less that's in the hall, the less of these contaminants in the hall, the less. You're leaning into these treatments. Actually, you know, the longer the GAC will last, the 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 less. The less contaminants you're in, and that lowers your operating cost. So I just wanted to point those out as complementary to what we're recommending. So that's that's the, we can go back and talk about anything, but that's the end of what we have prepared. You know, again, and I'll.
Reed, you might want to go back that path forward, that one.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. So what our goals would be. You know, is to. Is there? Consensus on one treatment option? If not, what are some steps you'd recommend to get us closer to consensus? Which is our first bullet, making a choice on what treatment to go forward. And then implementation option, do you like the flat fast track idea? Is that something that you want to move forward with? Is are there other things you'd like to explore as far as implementation? And then as Bill pointed out, regardless of the fast track, we we are requesting. That you consider moving forward immediately with the first two sub bullets here. Funding applications, preliminary engineering and environmental reports, which are long lead items you gotta start started first. So seeing where we're going, you know, in the next eighteen months, those need to start right away.
And and Reed, the preliminary engineering and the environmental reports are required to get the funding.
Yeah, thank you.
Reed, help me understand. The fast track scenarios are, I think, what eighteen to twenty four months and twelve to fifteen months, something like that?
Yes.
And then and then step B. Is is that is in both scenarios, option one and option two. Do steps A and B culminate in the three to four year timeframe that was shown in previous slides?
They would both start. Let me make sure I understood your question.
Overlap, that's what he's asking, yes.
Would both start at the exact same time. Option, step A runs for twelve to fifteen months and it's done. Step B, yeah, I think what you're asking is how long is step B? There is, thank you. Sorry, I had to walk through your question to find find my answer. So step B is. As shown here, three to four years.
So step B is in addition to step one from time perspective?
No, I think we're proposing to overlap them.
Overlap.
Okay, okay. So after three or four years, step A and B have occurred.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So for utmost clarity, Reed, please confirm. So if we went with fast track and it was twelve, twelve months. Then we would we would expect to have that again. I'm gonna massage some dates that in January of of twenty twenty two. We would be implementing the first phase of like the GAC going to fast track.
Yes, and and I would say our our time estimates are based on when you initiate the go, which, you know, when you initiate a contract to do it. When you when you give a design build contract, that's when the clock starts, because you can start working.
So so let's say that's today. For for purposes of the conversation and for the scenario, that that that's the twelve months. The three to four years is that by January of twenty twenty four, January twenty twenty five. The full six MGD would be implemented. Showing that there's concurrency in in the timeframes proposed.
Yes, and given that there's, you know, I. Yes, yeah, they're they're overlapped. I would say that we I we have made an estimate on the length of construction for a forty million dollar plant. Project of approximately two years. Now, is it? Two and a half years? Is it two point seven years? That's a level of detail we haven't gotten into yet, so. I feel very good about looking hard at the twelve to fifteen months for design build of the. Of of the GAC, the the initial fast track, the three to four years, don't read that with a decimal point, if you know what I mean. It's it's.
Because that involves things like the funding agencies, like Chris is getting about earlier. If the funding agency or the environmental start slow it down, that might.
Is achievable as long as things go typical, right?
Yeah, right. And and I I think all that, all that makes sense. I I think Commissioner Fioke's question is. It's three to four years in addition to twelve to fifteen months or twelve, you know, so are we looking at, you know. Four, is it four and a half or or five to six and a half years versus actually just three to four years?
It should be overlap as long as things go well.
Yeah, and I'll say about the five years for RO, which is also starts from today, if we're using the the analogy that you're you were saying. The when Brunswick County did RO, it took longer, a little bit longer to construct, a little bit longer design, a little bit longer to permit. So it's a cumulative of a couple of months in use. So the the permitting. The permitting in design added about a year. It was a lot. It was it was about eight or nine months more permitting and a couple more months of design. And then the construction adds a little bit to it. So we're adding a year plus onto this. But what we do, so the way you go through with an NPS permit. You would you would prepare a couple of reports and a and a model. They require a a di- a digital model. You submit that to them. That starts their clock. They're aiming for a six month review. I can tell you the last time I did this, they didn't come anywhere close to hitting that six month target. But you you turn in your reports, then they they turn their clock on. They're they're saying they're trying to get you all their comments back in six months. At that point, they will draft a permit, kind of like they do for wastewater plants. They will prepare a draft permit and they put it out for public comment. So it goes out for public comment for thirty days and then there's a public hearing. DEQ will collect all the public comments that come in during that period. They they have somebody assigned to it, almost like a case manager, and they receive the comments. And then that person, without input from you, is going to decide whether the comments were significant or not. If they decide they're not significant, you get your permit and life goes on. If they decide that they are significant, it's a little bit of a, well, nobody's, you know, it's up to them what comes next. Is there another hearing? You know, and and.
Or their studies.
Yeah, come could come back and say, study this a different way. So that that's the open endedness of the public comment period for a brand new NPS permit.
Well, and then the, you know, probably less factored in. Is when you look at the the two treatment options between, if you just limit it to RO or GAC and IX. The potential litigation challenges, injunctions. You know, you know, objections outside of that process for the discharge, but just other mechanisms that could be there. Again, staff's conversations with CDM Smith, who obviously has much greater. Ri- results to rely upon than than staff does currently, because we've never gone through this. You know, having some of those conversations, already being somewhat called upon and asking what we're doing, and we haven't even had this conversation with our own board. That that was kind of a a window in to say that, you know, we're not doing this in a vacuum. People are going to pay attention. And and maybe not always in an advantageous way for us. And so that's why, you know, some of my conversations with the board today have have probably pushed us more to the GAC IX side because. The the finish line is more reliable a- and quicker from what we can tell right now. I'll say probably, just generically, we we wanted to find every way to say yes to RO. Because a- as this chart shows here on the fourth column, it's the best technology. And, you know, that's what we want to provide to our citizenry is the best technology available. But we found them both to be very comparable. And so with the the lower cost, again, as projected, you never know until you get into it, but the lower cost as projected. And just the expediency, which we could install a solution. It seemed like GAC and IX was the proper path forward. Now, again, I I defer a lot to to our board here. As direct representatives of our citizenry. But again, we were hoping to present something that was comprehensive, showed the options available, showed. At least a high level version of the technologies and and hopefully we can get a a decision. From the board about what you feel is best moving forward. You know, as staff, we're here to to be implementers. And so whatever the board wishes are, we'll we'll do our very best to make sure it happens as fast as we possibly can and in the proper fashion, so. Yeah, I I I just, I would say my recommendation right now is the GAC and IX, but. That's just because we found it to be as reliable and quicker and cheaper. Or also, I should say, less expensive.
Yeah, I I think I agree with that. After looking over this ahead and listening to this, the. The the GAC and IX with the fastest fast track and the provision for future UV AOP. If we if we need it for one for the accident or some other thing that that comes along and shows up later. That's what seems like the best to me, short term and long term.
I agree, and it is based upon a lot of the information, obviously, you gentlemen have provided, and I think.
And I think, um, it's a, it's a very thorough and it's a very good report. And I really appreciate the time you put into it, I think, to simplify it as much as you could.
And and I appreciate too how you guys incorporated the the findings of the water quality task force as well and in the work that they did and how it ties, um, to this report as well. So I think this is a good wrap up of, um, a long time of, you know, information gathering and and I think it's time for action.
Yeah, I'm very, uh, very, very, very pleased, uh, that the, uh, presentation includes the fact track, fast track provisions in in both options. I remain concerned about, uh, the idea that, um. Well, the fact that, uh, the RO is the most effective technology option in terms of removing all the con- contaminants. I would like to see more, um, the 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 further detailed analysis, the the, um, calculations that brought us to five to thirteen million extra in concentrate, um, disposal costs. I am in very intrigued that, uh, we might be able to pursue the, um, fast track, uh, one million gallon per year, uh, granular activated carbon filtration in the very near term and, uh, revisit possibly the question of the three to four year project, whether or not we would be doing GAC or reverse osmosis at that stage. You know, I just, I find it so compelling what, uh, Mayor asks, what would the difference be if we weren't filtering our drinking water in terms of concerns of downstream, uh, municipalities? I very much appreciate their perspective, they they want to reduce their costs. And if we can take out some of the contaminants up here and they don't come downstream to them, then that's that much less that they're gonna have to manage themselves. But, uh, I'd love to see some numbers on what our modest withdrawals from the Hall River. How much does that reduce, actually, the flow of the river and the contaminants in the river? But I also am not at all eager to, uh, have any of our projects delayed with. Am I understanding correctly that we would only have a new NPDS permit in the case of the reverse osmosis?
Yes, right.
Yeah, you already have a an NPDS permit for your existing plant. The GAC would just be a part of your incorporated into the plant.
Yeah, so let me share a little bit more with the board about my my reservations, because, um, whether it's landfilling the granular activated carbon or, um, reactivating it in a thermal process or having it completely incinerated. You know, we all live downstream and that's that's going to be impacting some other community. And I I think that, um, that is one of the values of the town of Pittsboro is that we do like to think about our neighbors and we do like to reduce our solid waste by recycling. And we don't want to increase toxic waste landfill in another community or, um, the incineration of toxic materials, which may or may not actually be destroyed in the incineration process, that's what I'm hearing. There's debate about that. And, uh, for us to make a capital investment in something that, uh, we know is going to generate streams, tons per year of this material that would have to be incinerated elsewhere. You know, maybe we would be better off by pursuing the reverse osmosis as our six million gallon expansion and seeking assistance from the State Department of Environmental Quality for the grant to do the concentrate disposal. Five to thirteen million dollars is, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money for disposal of concentrate that would still be in the Hall River, were it not for our efforts to remove it from our own drinking water. Uh, and Mayor Nas, I think that's, that's a concern that you've kind of articulated before.
Yes.
But I I think if I understood the treatment of the RO concentrate correctly, that is still then, uh, treated through GAC, which would then still be incinerated. We still have that problem down the road, correct?
Good point.
Right. So, so the osmosis has the byproduct as well as the others, is that correct?
Unless we, un- unless we are somehow able to get permission through an NPDS pr- process to discharge the untreated concentrant back into the, um, well, at that point, it would be Jordan Lake.
Well, we wouldn't want to discharge it back in. But I do have a question about the, uh, the combined GAC. You had indicated, if I'm not mistaken, that there would be filters that you would have to replace every three to four months or something like that, is that correct?
And the cost.
It's actually the the media, which is, uh, the granular activated carbon itself is sucked out of the filter, a truck, taken away and disposed of either by incineration or hazardous waste disposal landfill.
So is that included in that cost there or that's additional?
It it's included in the cost, both the capital and the lifecycle cost, we included it.
Okay, okay, and with the, um, the osmosis, the schedule, I didn't see the schedule, approximate schedule for that, would that be five years to implement?
Yeah, at least five years because of that permit issue.
Okay.
We're, we're definitely estimating, it doesn't take five years to design it. It, you know, we could design it in one year, but we're, we are estimating that you've got design permitting, then, you know, then procurement, you you know, bidding and procurement, you know, you've got, uh, and then you've got construction, that's probably gonna be three years.
Okay.
Well, and and Commissioner Baldwin, part of that is, is is CDM Smith has experience with this in Brunswick County.
Okay.
When, when you look at Brunswick County juxtaposed against the town of Pittsboro, Brunswick County discharges to the Atlantic Ocean, a a much larger, uh, eh, you know, body of water where, um, whereas when we discharge, the downstream neighbors are much more apparent in in terms of incorporated areas. And so part of, part of the calculus, if you will, is the fact that, understanding how long it took Brunswick County to get permitted, we anticipate there'll be more challenges, because the downstream neighbors are much more apparent it to be, uh, problematic and concerning, if you will, than Brunswick County experienced with their own permitting.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, this was very, very good, very interesting and very informative, I do appreciate this, I really do.
The, one other question I I have, um, this twenty year lifecycle cost, uh, for the RO, does that somehow quantify the ten percent of the water generated that is not delivered for revenue?
Since that's not really a cost, is, there's no adder for that, but it, the cost of, uh, treating and discharging that is included.
You've got to treat and. You've got to treat more water, right?
What sort of an extra disadvantage you're getting at, long term? You are wasting ten percent of the water.
Right, right. Is that somehow quantified?
Disadvantage, but not a cost.
I I don't think we did quantify the opportunity loss, you know, what is, what is? If you're losing six hundred thousand gallons of water a day, that's revenue you're not making. That's something we could add, Bill, I don't think we have that in there.
Well, you, I don't think you would add that, you're, you're getting, you're selling all the water demand you're gonna get either way.
Well, I I think to Commissioner Fiocco's point, though, when you're losing six hundred thousand gallons a day at Build Out, we are, we would be inherently opportunity calls of, if you're treating six million gallons of potable water that goes out, i- if you have six hundred thousand gallons wasted every day, that's almost equivalent to our daily demand, probably exceeds our daily demand today, that we will be wasting in a few years as as part of that, so.
It's definitely a disadvantage.
Yeah. Does, well, I'll ask this for 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 reading, Bill. When, when our plant capacity is six million gallons a day, and if we have a ten percent loss, is the real capacity of the plant six point six or five point four?
Yes, so the way that, great question, so the way that works, you have to upsize everything ahead of the RO. So we would make the conventional plant six point six MGD ahead of the RO.
Yeah, I I also just wanted to draw out that, you know, you'll be at six MGD by these projections in year twenty forty. So it is six hundred thousand gallons, sounds like a lot of water right now. And it's not an insignificant amount, but in twenty forty, it will only be ten percent of your flow.
I guess my takeaway is it's an additional alcohol at a cost, but that's not reflected in in the figures.
I think that's fair, yeah, we try to keep apples to apples, uh, you know, but I I think your comment is fair. And if you'd like us to, you know, look at, you know, to Bill, Bill's point, you can, you can have opportunity to sell water. You know, but you you have to have demand for it and you won't have demand beyond five point. I think, I think it's a fair point, I I.
Yeah, it it should be added to the disadvantages, because long term, um, that that water, you may wish you had.
Yeah.
But so I think, I think at the end of the day, just, it's one of those things when you're looking at the technologies, it just is what it is, as as non-engineering terminology as that is, is that if, if it's, it's listed there as a potential disadvantage, but if RO is is where you want our treatment levels to be, because it's considered to be, while both are superior in terms of our goal of ninety percent or better, RO is considered the best technology available. So I say it is what it is, that if 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 that's your preference to go that way, then it's just a casualty of the design that we move forward with, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and and there are things we didn't, there's a couple of, I'll call it fancy widgets, we can add to the RO and get even better than ten percent. Uh, we we have a plant, uh, I think it's in Arizona, that gets five percent, only wastes five percent. There are things that can be done, um, that cost a little bit more. I don't know how, if adds a million dollars or something, but you can get it down to five percent.
Well, and it it wasn't lost to me and probably not the rest of the board, that we were going through the site plans for the dialysis and the gentleman from there said, you know, they have a seventy-five percent. So they're, they're, they have a twenty-five percent loss in their water. Perhaps I was hypersensitive, because I knew this conversation was a couple items behind it. But, you know, a- as you get more macro with your efforts, generally, the better, as I understand it at least, the better your savings is, but there's always gonna be a byproduct.
So, Mr. Barton and Mr. Delbigin, um, the, uh, the grain rock activated carbon, are you aware of of any municipalities or commercial scale, uh, perhaps industrial facilities that are using biomass resource for, in other words, charcoal rather than fossil fuel based granular activated carbon?
Oh, like a beneficial reuse of it?
Or, or is, is Calgon originating sale of charcoal?
Yeah, Ca- Calgon mines coal and puts it through a furnace to create granular activated carbon. And we typically would be getting that, uh, from within the state, you know, uh, you know, like they have mines in Pennsylvania, for example, where they're mining the coal.
And and are we aware of any municipalities or industrial, uh, water treatment plants that, um, drinking or potable water treatment plants that are using biomass based like, uh, carbonized wood chips or, um, charcoal?
Um, there, there is, there is wood-based GAC.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that exists.
Mm-hmm.
There's coconut based, there's, there are, there are, uh, other ones. Those could be, you know, as far as if we wanted to test a few others that were of that nature, we could and see how well they perform. Um, and if they reached, you know, good, good performance, you know, they can be substituted. Uh, we tested, how many, was it three or four different types, Bill?
Many.
Good number, yeah.
Yeah, we tested three different manufacturers in this.
Three, okay.
There any thoughts about, uh, what levels of these chemicals in the water would have to get to to achieve the ninety percent that we're looking for without anything being done? In other words, if the EPA at the federal level or at state level put enforceable requirements on the discharge of these materials into, uh, rivers, is there been any work done that you're aware of as to what level that would have to get to to reach the goals that we have set for ourselves?
The the sources, I guess, to to, I'm not sure if I can fully answer that question, but the start to it is, is the sources, um. You know, the SELC, uh, Southern Environmental Law Center, um, has, uh, partnered with, I think it's Riverkeeper and, uh, uh, had some meetings with the city of Burlington to look at whether they can pinpoint where sources or a PFAS particularly are coming, not one for dioxin, but PFAS. And, uh, I I have to say, I'm not fully up to speed on it. I think the current status is that they are, the state and others are collecting data right now to try to determine if they can find a smoking gun or a couple smoking guns. I I I will say this, I heard this and I did not read it, and and I don't know if it's true, but I think that one of the sources they're looking at, in addition to the wastewater treatment plants, is the landfill. So if it, let's just operate on hypo- hypotheticals here, if a landfill is the source of PFAS, what has been buried in there is not gonna run out of PFAS anytime soon.
That's right, yeah, okay, well, you know, all these, these, these compounds are in the air. I mean, they, it's currents around the world, uh, but, uh, I I just thought of the issue seen as there may be some change in attitudes in terms of, uh, trying to regulate the domestic variety, at least.
The the EPA has indicated that they may move forward with regulations on PFAS and PFOA. Right now, they have recommendations, not regulations.
Right.
They, they may, but I, and they may move forward with Gen X, and there may be a few others in the next couple of years. But I think the vast majority of PFAS comments will probably remain unregulated.
Yeah.
Uh, which kind of takes the teeth out of Pittsboro's ability to turn to a neighbor or 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 industrial user and say, hey, you're breaking the law, fix this.
And and as I recall, I'm not sure how much direct observation there is to back this up, but we also have speculation, Mayor Nas, that the sources that we're suffering from are not just possibly post-industrial, but the, um, airport, I believe the Greensboro Regional Airport with the firefighting training grounds there is a a a hotspot of the perfluorinated compounds. And then additionally, the concerns about, um, materials in sewage sludge that's land applied to agricultural lands upstream from us. So that's two big source. So, that's two big sources that would not be influenced by any foreseeable federal regulation.
Yeah. Our best, best hope is that if regulation does come to fruition of any kind, that rather than eliminating the need for some of these things, it's probably more that our media lasts a little bit longer. You know, we might go from four months with GAC and IX to five months. Um, you know, and again, every day helps over, especially when you're looking at a 20-year period. Um, and even greater, so even if it's a day of savings, that, that saves us money long-term. Um, but that's probably where we see the most gains. It's not the elimination of the methods. It's the longevity of the media that's used within the method itself.
Yeah. And, and I think, I mean, this, this treatment is obviously the right thing to do for the citizens. But I think also, when we talk about getting repaid or getting, you know, help from other communities or things like that with the cost. Probably our best way to do it is to be going down the road, uh, knowing exactly what the cost is and when it's coming. And then we could apply for specific grants.
Right.
Um, you know, specific approval. If we, i- if we continue to say, uh, let's, let's think about grants for planning or, or other things, then we're kind of in the same line as everybody else. If we, if we have known cost and known project, it seems like that's easier to get, you know, funding or grants for those.
Well, I, I'll say this, the state has certain funding streams that give you money for putting, for either knowing or unknowingly putting a lift station, a sewer lift station in a wetland or in a flood zone. They will, they will provide grant money to get, get it out of those areas. I, I would like to think that in a decision like that, that receives funding, where you probably should have known better in some regards. Now, again, those same delineations of wetlands and things that change every time, and I get that. But this is something that has nothing to do with Pittsburgh, and Pitt, and nothing of our decision-making created this problem for us. I would hope that for, if their grant funding is allowed for things that are perhaps, uh, more direct to, to a town's decision-making. Certainly, things that are impressed upon us that had nothing to do with us. I would hope the town would set sort of funding stream there. And that's kind of the part of the, the crux of the conversation I'm going to be having with, um, some of the state officials and leaders that I hope to be, to get a, a seat at the table with, to talk about of, again, I understand they can't fix all this stuff. There's EPA policy, there's state policy, but there are monies available that can help offset this. Because, I mean, we're talking, at best, again, looking at the screen here, at best, $42 million of $20, $20 to fix a problem for our citizens that we did not create.
Right.
So, that, 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 again, as I've said before, that is disproportionate by a long shot burden impressed upon us to fix a problem that we didn't create.
Yeah.
Well, this has been a very persuasive presentation. I very much appreciate hearing from other board members. I'm cognizant of the fact that we've still got more things on our agenda with the closed session. And, um, I, I feel a great sense of urgency. As all of you know, you've heard me say a number of times before. My trepidations aside, um, I would like to make, I would like to make a motion that we immediately begin pursuing the fast-track. Either option one or option two, I'm not sure which one it should be, but for the granulator, granular activated carbon uh, at 1 million yon per day treatment addition. That would be my motion, and I would be far more comfortable if, um, we could, uh, agree that we need to, um, invest in, in exploring better understanding, um, the possibility of carbon negative uh, activated carbon. In other words, the biomass-based sources of coconut hull or wood chips or whatever form of charcoal, um, seems to be most effective in our pilot-scale filtration system. That's a complicated statement. That is not actually a motion, but I would like to hear discussion on what I've just suggested.
I'd, I'd definitely be in favor of the design-build option. I, I think for, you know, efficiency, and it's the fastest fast-track. And, um, you know, I certainly agree with that. And the, the, uh, I guess the recommendation of the Water Quality Task Force in, in regards to point-of-use, uh, treatment. I think if we were to, as a town, roll out a program like this, it'd be difficult to accomplish within 12 months. Um, when this has the potential to do it, uh, for the whole town, uh, in that, in that time period. So, um, I, I think that that, the fast-track being included here is, is really good. Um, and the potential to have that online in, you know, probably 14 months or, or whatever it would take to, to get out to, to bid there. Um, or to design, um, you know, I really, I really do think that is the way to go, to do that as fast as possible. Um, but understanding, we're, we're talking about a lot of real money, and in that case, you know, cash or, or some other quick funding option. But, um, I, I think that would also set us up better, uh, in, in my mind, in my, in my hopes for, uh, a story later when we go to get funding that we've already outlaid, you know, this portion of our enterprise fund. Um, in, in the interest of, of safety, really. And then, um, you know, hopefully we could get that reimbursed, um, in additional funding in the future.
I'm curious, uh, Reed, to John's second point about the non-coal-based carbon. Using some other material and source, would that materially change the design?
We, we, we would have to test it. We, uh, we still have the pilot set up at the water plant.
I see, see for effectiveness?
We, we could initiate a fresh study going on, you know, in, in, in grand scheme. It doesn't cost very much to keep operating the pilot. Um, we could put some non-coal-based carbons in there and run, run a couple months of tests. I mean, uh, Bill, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, the problem with the breakthrough test is it, it just takes time, so it's not like you give an instantaneous data, data point that just tells you. But, um, Bill, what are your thoughts? Have you tested coconut-based or, or other non-coal-based carbons? Testing them on, well, on, on.
They can be tested. I would encourage you to do it in parallel, or you're going to slow things down.
Right.
And to not give it, not like, uh, to, to control expectations. We have tested them before, and they did not do quite as well. Um, but that said, e- every site's different.
Well, and that's, I think, the basis of my, um, question. And would it materially modif- change the ultimate design of the plant using one, um, carbon, activated carbon versus a, a different one? In other words, would you, would you have to do something different, really significantly different in the design?
The only way it would change is, say it performed half as well. And you decided, well, we still want to do it.
Yeah.
Then the O and M cost would double, right?
Okay.
But, but for, for all intents and purposes, the pipes.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, that's all.
The picture behind you, Bill, that's in your background, we see, you know, the bank tubes with carbon in there. Am I using the same bank tube, whether I'm using coconut or, or GAC?
Yeah, in fact, just looking at it, you probably couldn't tell the difference.
So we could do this in parallel. If we were to move forward with the design, we could run the pilot program with this alternate material to see its effectiveness and not lose any time.
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if I may to Reed or Bill, the, the issue in procuring all of the infrastructure is not the media, it's the pumps, it's the, you know, all, all the, the infrastructure, not necessarily the media itself, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the media itself, so, uh, a, 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 a small percentage of the total. Um, but that said, the, the media for the fast-track, you need to decide on pretty quick. You know, within, say, uh, three, four months. So, they, if you do investigate alternate media, I would make that more for your long-term solution than for the fast-track. So it's not to risk delaying the fast-track.
I agree.
Plus, you're going to be using it up in a couple of months, so.
Yeah, good point.
You know, after four months, you'll need to change it anyways. You could order a new, uh, non-coal-based in your second order.
So that, that brings up a good point, I guess. Uh, in this testing, as we get over that threshold, uh, I mean, of course, there's no, there's no actual line at 12% or something. But what is, what's the frequency of testing and, and how fast can we catch the, uh, material being overloaded? Or to, to the point that, that we would want to change it out?
Yeah, so, i- i- the turnaround is more than like, you send it off to the lab, you got to wait a week or two. It, because of that, and it's an expensive test. So, because of all that, and to be very cost-efficient in the use of the GAC and/or ion exchange, what we do is called lead lag, meaning we'll do two vessels. And you sample out, coming out of the first one, and when it starts to get up in concentration, say to 30% breaking through, uh, then you'll, uh, replace it and switch it to where it is now the lead.
Okay.
That, because i- you think about it, if you didn't do that, you'd be changing that stuff as soon as it reaches 10%. So, you would, a lot of, uh, it would be wasted.
That, that's what I was curious, that, that makes a lot more sense. So it's like, it's like a pre and a final, and then you switch them.
Right, you monitor in between.
Okay.
The piping that's between these large vessels that hold the media can be reversed. You can, you, you don't switch the vessel, you close valves and you make water go.
Sure.
The right, you know, and.
So, um, this, for the, or like, I'm also cognizant that Commissioner Farrell is not with us this evening. And overall, this is a 15 to $25 million decision, maybe. Um, so, I, I guess overall, I, I think that, I think the fast-track is the right thing to do, and I think we should do that as soon as possible. But I think it would be possible to, uh, perhaps wait the, the two weeks to, to kind of talk more about the longer-term option.
Um, I, I will point out, and I think you addressed this in your comment about, you know, saying two weeks. Um, w- we could immediately start developing a, a scope and, you know, uh, you know, a design-build contract, all these kind of things that go into the, getting, getting the ball rolling. Um, but as I think Bill pointed out earlier, we wouldn't want to kick that can too far down the road because the fast-track option needs to be designed within the context of what the whole plant's going to look like eventually. Otherwise, they're likely, we're going to be, you know, making some mistakes, or things that we view later as mistakes.
And you're going to need that, that, those funding applications and the PER to get any funding. So, so that, that part's pretty urgent, but that's all small dollars compared to what you're talking about, the, the phase two construction and all that.
Well, I think, I think to Commissioner Ship's, um, comment, I think i- if, if the board blesses me to proceed forward with CDM Smith this evening and said, all right, Chris, we, we've seen that there, there's a fast-track option with GAC only. That gets us to the best advanced treatment that we can get in the most expeditious manner, let's go forward, let's start that. If, if, if I have that blessing, I, which I, I feel like we're getting close to that point, and obviously, there's a lot of questions to be answered on the fringes of that, and especially for the long-term side. Um, and I'm, I, I, I too appreciate Mr. Farrell's, um, you know, input in this. He's 20% of the voting, of the voting of the board right now, uh, being one of five. So, um, we, we certainly want to be cognizant of, of his position. I still have to go forward with CDM Smith, try to prepare a cost estimate, try to put together a budget amendment that would be on your, as quick as I could get it, really, would be on your January 25th Board of Commissioners meeting. We could then kind of pick up this conversation, include Mr. Farrell at that point. Um, a- and kind of proceed forward if, if, if that seems to, to mend that. I don't know that we're going to have a whole lot of, um, action, if you will, in terms of like, okay, we're ordering parts in the next two weeks. But there certainly is a, uh, a lot we can do from a paperwork perspective to get us in a legal framework to do that very quickly after we get 100% participation from the board in terms of a decision, if that makes sense.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense, and it gives us some, some nights to sleep on this amount of money, um, and, and things like that. But, uh, yeah, if we could be prepared to move, you know, essentially immediately after, after the next meeting.
I, I won't be, uh, I won't be in physically in this, uh, state in, on the 25th. Um, otherwise, I.
Boom, it's fine.
I, actually, I, I, I probably, I probably.
I don't know if you're on vacation, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, well, and, and I'll say this, the, um, when I, when I spoke with Commissioner Farrell earlier today, just checking in, um, he was, he was very encouraged, uh, by this information. Um, and I, I told him that once the meeting's all wrapped up, um, because we're trying to get some of these meetings up on YouTube a- and the like, we'll get him the recording of the meeting, because he did want to watch it just to catch up, especially on this topic in particular. Um, so I would like to think that we could most likely proceed, again, I'll, I'll poll Mr. Farrell myself. But, um, as well as the rest of the board, but I feel like on the 25th, we could probably proceed forward without C, CDM Smith on that call. Um, a- and I can just navigate the, the particulars, um, outside of, of the, the regular meeting of the board, if that's okay.
And, and Bill, and, and Bill's, you know, the, Bill's, can, can, Bill, you, are you available on the 25th?
I, I can, dude, I can handle.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm taking my kids skiing for the first time ever.
Hey.
I mean, we can certainly send questions in, in the meantime.
Yeah.
Well.
I have a cell phone.
I do, I do think if we have Chris work with CD Smith over the next, uh, time between now and then, and he gets information to the board, uh, in, uh, the fashion that he has on so many other things, that, uh, we should be able to take this topic up in our next board meeting and, and deal with it with the full board. I, I, Chris's suggestion on that.
You know, I hate to do this, but I do have one other question. The, uh, combined GAC and IX, um, protocol. Um, I think the prices are based on the outdoor, um, treatment versus the indoor?
We gave it both ways, good question. The 11 million was the outdoor, the 13 million includes putting a building around it.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
And you probably, you probably would want a building around it.
Well, that's what I heard pretty clearly.
Yeah, but we've done it both ways. Pender County, North Carolina, they're outside, but we've done them inside often.
Okay.
Well, if there's nothing else, I would then thank you very much, Reed and Bill, for another, uh, good presentation and wonderful discussion. Uh, you guys have a real ability to make things, uh, easy and clear for us to, uh, understand sometimes. And we know that's difficult, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Yeah, thank you. I, I would note that, really, the knowledge and guidance of this board and your staff has been very instrumental and helpful to, uh, contributing to the quality of all of this.
We, we pass that to the staff. Thank you, Bill, appreciate it.
Thank you, gents.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. You all have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, Plank Department Report on the Unified Development, uh, Status and Timeline.
Would anyone mind if I took three minutes?
Could you wait three minutes? No.
I mind, you can't have three minutes.
All right, I'll see you, I'll see you in five.
Let's, uh, all right, we'll take a break for, let's say, five, six minutes, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So we all, oh, there we go. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
All right, we left when we were at the point of the. U D O plan. Who from planning is up?
This is Teresa Thompson.
Hi Teresa.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Good, good. Well, thank you, Mayor Nass, and good evening, members of the board. We just wanted to give you guys a quick update on the timeline. So this is just tentative to give you an idea of how the chapters have been, have been broken out over the next few meetings. We included the six discussion topics that were originally in the memo. We also added the four additional topics. That would include maximum height discussion, accessory structures, A D U. Size discussion and second entrance discussion. Those were also brought up at the last meeting. So, um, like I said, this is just tentative. If you, as we're going through each chapter, we expect and completely understand that additional items are going to be added. So feel free to reach out to us anytime and let us know if you want us to add anything, and we will do so. Fold it into the timeline as we go. So if you have any questions, please, please let us know. If not, we will start on January twenty-fifth.
And I would say too, to go along with that, Mayor, as part of this, certainly I intend to keep the board informed on certain policy language, this upcoming, as, as staff gets language put together. I'll try to get that to you in advance of these timelines. So don't feel like that, you know, if you see on you know, March twenty-second on the screen here, it says accessory structure setbacks. Don't feel like you're, you're not going to see that until a week before that meeting. We're going to, we're going to work on all these things, try to have these to you as soon as we can. Certainly, there is some timing mechanism involved with it of the sequence of how we're going to kind of work our way through the document. But as we, as we continue to work on this, as we hit areas that need more guidance or areas where we say, okay, we need to get this in front of the board sooner than not. We're not going to be bashful about getting that to the board in advance of the timelines you hear. These, these are just the meetings that we intend to hit on it. But it may also involve conversations via email or other phone calls that, that pertain to these same things. These, this is just the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule. And I just don't want you to think that those are only going to constrain to that meeting. That, you know, that's your one and only opportunity, you won't see it before and you won't, you won't talk about it after. It's going to be a larger conversation that we're going to have as we go through towards ultimate adoption. Chris and Teresa, I've, you know, received, I think we've all, the document is in the portal, in the SharePoint. Portal with the edits. And one question I have is, well, what I have done is I've logged in, I've grabbed. I've gotten into that file and I've made notes and made edits. And so Teresa, I see you shaking your head, so maybe you've seen some of that already.
Um, I was just understanding what you were saying.
Oh, I see, okay. So is that what we should be doing? That was what I understood was you produced something, I think it was in December, I forget, the twelfth or, or something, maybe the second was the document. And I understood that that was basically for us to review. And so that's what I've started doing. Should I not be doing that? No, I think that's perfectly fine. Again, they're going to be, I'll say different methods. And certainly probably each commissioner is going to have a different method about how they want to go through it. Do they want to you know, review it now and then as we work through it, cover that basis again? Do we want to, you know, have it presented and then go back? And again, there's going to be different sequencing for each person. But if you get, if you go through now, especially no comments too early to provide, I'll just say that. So if you're, if you're already finding comments. What we can do is work off that SharePoint off the Board of Commissioners. If you have a, a series of comments put on there. Perhaps it's a subtle ping email to me saying, hey, Chris, I just put some on there, make sure that, you know, staff is seeing these as, as quickly as they can to factor that into the rest of the language as we prepare it. That would be super helpful for me to relate to the planning staff if you are going to that effort to do so. And I am taking that Word document and working within it. That's fine. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like for you, you know, if you want to, you know, do the Word document and save it as M A F comments. Then that's fine and. I can tell you that I did not do that because I thought, I took a cue from the fact that when I got into it, it was saying already, I'm tracking changes. And I thought, oh, well, then maybe the entire, you know, we're going to have six or seven different colors and edits and, you know, so that's what I, what I did. I can stop doing that.
I think that's the advantage of the live Word. There, absolutely.
It is. I'll tell you though, Kyle, getting in there, it doesn't behave like Word on your own computer. It's a little challenging sometimes.
I think the file size in this case is.
Well, you can, you can thank Clarion for that too. Oh, my gosh. I have many things to thank them for. If nothing else, they earned or perpetuated a future consulting agreement merely in how they've prioritized, and I just made up a word, I know, the formatting of that document. It's all but having to call Johnson Controls to figure out how to edit that thing.
Yes. It is okay if the formatting, it's, it's already, it, it's already a mess. So we know before we get, it gets to you for a final review, we will probably have to reformat the whole thing. So we understand that.
Lovely. And appreciate your patience with that.
Yeah, well, I mean, in, in regards to that in the discussion, like I, I love seeing adoption next to twenty-six April right here. But how, how realistic is that in terms of us reviewing three chapters per meeting or four chapters per meeting? And then also, you know, the potential for a complete reformat or a clean copy or, you know, all of those things. Or I realize there's a month, I guess, between, between these, but.
Yeah. Well, I will say the, the formatting is a non-substantive thing. So when you approve something to form in terms of the language, that kind of sets that. I, I would say that I, I think the twenty-sixth of April is realistic. We'll see how we go through the review. Again, we've, we've come this far in this amount of time that, you know, I don't think we're going to we don't want to extend the scope of the timeline too much, but I don't think anybody's going to balk it two extra weeks to, to have the most or the best document possible. And I think kind of to blend your comment and Commissioner Fiocco's comment about, you know, what should be doing now. Any review, any reading that you're doing now and editorial comments, any questions that you may have will be helpful for us as we go through these. You know, we're not going to go line by line as we, you know, go through chapters one through three in two weeks from now. We're going to hit on the high points and presume that, you know, existing language that was borrowed from our, our, our current zoning ordinance and put into the new one that remains unchanged, that we're not really going to discuss. Or stuff that's been previously vetted. So it, it's going to be interesting, say the least. I probably can't best answer your question until I get to February. You know, we go through the first iteration and see how the comments are coming out. But again, we, we want to be responsive to it and we want to get this thing tidied up sooner than not. So we're going to do our very best to push and make sure that April date becomes a realistic date.
Okay, that sounds great.
Anything else on the U D O?
And I'll say too, we'll, this timeline will be updated for every meeting. So a, as we, I mean, obviously for, for the twenty-fifth, it's going to be pretty static as you see here. If after the twenty-fifth, we have conversations with planning staff and say, okay, well, this went well, that, that didn't go as well. Or that didn't convey as well, then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. So you'll see it in real time. And also too, we were, we're, as you can tell, we had a kind of schedule for the second meeting of the month. To give us time and give you all time to review the document. If we have to get, you know, we have to divide that up, that time up a little more. And have something in every single meeting, we can do that as well. But in order to give you all a little bit of reprieve and staff a little reprieve to do other things besides U D O review. That's how we marked it up initially, but again, we'll pivot as, as we see fit, as we get, as all of us, staff and the board get better at understanding what the requirements are going to be to get this thing adopted.
Okay, if there's nothing else then on this item. Believe that I will be in position to entertain a motion to go into closed session. They, I think there's another Zoom credential that Cassie put out that will take us into that session. And then when we finish, we'll come out of that session and come back into this session in order to finally adjourn completely. But I would entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight dot eleven dot little a dot percy six.
So moved.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Um, I would like to know where the other credential is to get into this meeting.
Send an email from Cassie.
An email.
It was immediately after the original.
Right.
I'll, I'll find it.
I'll resend it to you.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Just go ahead and reset it to us all, we'll be sure we have the right one, Cassie.
Okay, I'll do that, just give me a few seconds.
Yep, thank you.
We did.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Alright, good.
Alright, so we'll leave this one and then see you on the other side. All right.